City of Romulus, Planning Commission regular meeting for Monday, June 19th, 2023. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Since this is a large meeting tonight, we would ask that you please refrain from communicating with each other to disrupt it. If you have something to say, you can come up to the podium and give us your comments when you're ready. Item two is roll call, sir.
Roll call. Mr. Frederick?
Here.
Mr. Gladfeltie?
Here.
Mr. McNally?
Present.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Roscoe?
Here.
Ms. Jamison?
Here.
Mr. Crowe?
Here.
I'm here. Bobbade and Chairman Freitag?
Here.
Item three is approval of the agenda.
So moved, Chair.
Support.
Was that you? You, you? Excuse me. I have a motion for Mr. Gladfeltie, supported by Ms. Jamison, to approve the agenda as submitted discussion. Mr. Gladfeltie?
Yes.
Ms. Jamison?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbade?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the agenda is approved. Item four is approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Was that you again, Ms.? Okay. Excuse me. I have a motion from Ms. Jamison, supported by Mr. Crowe, to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Ms. Jamison?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbade?
Excuse?
Mr. Gladfeltie?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Absent.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the minutes are approved. Item five is comments from the public on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on something that's not on our agenda tonight? Right, moving right along. We have item six, public hearings. The first public hearing is SLU 2023-004 and SPR 2023-009, Romulus Distribution Center. And you are asking for special land use and site plan approval for 36711 E-course Road, construction of two industrial warehouse distribution buildings that exceed 80,000 square feet in size. Prosecutor is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kyle Morton from Ashley Capital. I'm going to start with just a little history of the project, but also just worth noting, we've got our few members of our construction team here, our civil engineer, our traffic engineer, our architect, and our landscape architect. So, of course, there are going to be a few items and I'm sure a few questions regarding those topics. So happy to pass it over when we get to specific questions that you have. They'll be able to answer that a lot better than I can. All right, let's see if this works. All right, so this project's been about four years in the making since we first started talking to the city about this, probably in middle of late 2019. We identified it as the largest M1 zoning property left in the city. It does have its challenges with historic landfill use. We'll kind of talk about what we've been doing over the last four years to get to this point, some additional land assemblage and what we're proposing on the site. So no, it's a lot of text on there, but and some of you are familiar because we were here last meeting for something different, but I know some people in the audience haven't met, haven't met me or who Ashley Capital is. We've been in the Detroit market for over 30 years and we specialize in what we call bulk warehouse buildings, these light industrial buildings. Our average building in metro Detroit is over 500,000 feet. We currently own over 22 million feet, so pushing just about 40 buildings kind of spread across the tri-county area. One of the things we were known for is brownfield redevelopment. These would be our third, third site. It's actually be our sixth and seventh buildings on landfills. So we have a team of experts internally and externally from consultants that are used to complicated projects like this. So at the end of the slide deck, we've got recent examples. We did a project at the Hazel Park Race Track, which had three buildings very similar to this, as well as in Sterling Heights, the Liberty Park of America softball field. So we can talk about those at the end. So we put the overall slide, slide number four is the overall site. It's very large, it's 280 acres, but really what's usable and what is listed in the review comments is roughly 80 acres. It's really the eastern portion of the site. The rest is actually encumbered by a conservation easement. This is slide six. So what we have highlighted in the yellow area is a conservation easement that was actually put in place when the Pinnacle Race Track was built in Huron Township. This was a offset for the wetland impacts that were impacted for that project. So this is a state conservation easement that requires inspection every three years. We have representatives from the state out there. Nothing that we're proposing impacts those conservation easements. We're not looking to lift those easements or build anything in that area. Just going back to the fifth slide, just to talk about what really took us so long to get to this point outside of some COVID delays. We spent some considerable time working on a land assemblage. The main parcel came from the city, which was basically everything that was a conservation easement, as well as the southern landfill, which we'll see on the next page. The additional, I think it's five parcels that we acquired, commonly known as the pallet farm. There was also a property just to the west of the existing LKQ building, as well as three residential properties. That was all done for access. Currently, the site, prior to that, the site had two access points. We had the 20-foot wide drive up against the railroad tracks between the building, which would not work for a primary access. And then we also have what we labeled with the original access, which was the dirt road that runs through with residential on both sides. So we acquired some land and were able to get new access, new circulation plan, which allowed us to put a traffic signal and line up with General Motors driveway. So that was a big focus from a preliminary meeting with the city about a year ago, that they wanted a traffic signal and they needed E-course road improvement. So it took us a little bit of time to get that figured out and we bought those last two houses last year. All right, so slide six, again, just pointing out the two landfills. There's really, there's actually two separate landfilling operations here. These were both unlicensed. They weren't handled through a state regulatory agency. It's not, when we say landfill, it really was dumping on the site. And a lot of this actually is what caused the elevation changes. We have about 75 feet of elevation change out on the site, which is very unique for Western Wayne County. It looks very odd out there. So we just put two slides, two pictures from back in the 60s, what this looked like when the landfill operations were going on. The picture on the left orients with our site plan. The aerial on the right, in the bottom right-hand corner, would be where that LKQ building is and the, where the railroad track runs across the page left to right. All right, so from a project summary standpoint, we touched upon the unregulated landfills. We touched upon what's largely M1 zoning. We dropped a little red line here, which matches up with the zoning map, just to show where the differentiation is between the M1 and the R1 zoning. Outlined in, in our request, as well as the review, we've asked for a zoning board of appeals use variance to make sure that we can put that detention pond in the residentially zoned land. This was, this basically was an outcome of a lot of, a lot of different items. One, we've got a big topography challenge. Two, we've got a ton of landfill material and we were trying to find a location where we could put the detention pond that was not in the landfill. Would make it cost prohibitive to do that. And the third is, we were originally hoping to put the detention pond out towards E-course Road, but that ended up being regulated wetlands and the state did not want us putting it there. So led us to the most viable option there on the west side. We talked, so the second half of a lot of this slide deck are carryovers from our brownfield plan meetings, both at the brownfield board, as well as city council. So we went, we've been forward to both boards at least twice and wanted to make sure, we kind of touched upon some of that stuff because we haven't been planning commission with it. So what are our biggest concerns when it comes to a site like this? It's really a combination of environmental, between the methane and the fill. This wasn't municipal waste, it was more constructed solid waste. So don't think bananas and diapers and stuff like that. This is more wood and, and there are a lot of 55-gallon drums out there for time periods, car parts, stuff like that. So heavy, heavy stuff with less of an organic content. So this isn't expected to settle drastically over time. And one of the other things we touched upon, or touched upon quickly, was just the elevation change. So between the road, the north landfill and the south landfill, we're over 50 feet. Basically, the proposal here is to take the southern landfill and level it out to the northern landfill, so to create one flat site. Right now, we've got a kind of a ski slope down on the, on the south, south side of the site. So what that means, it's 750,000 cubic yards of soil need to be moved. So it's a pretty considerable amount of material that needs to be moved south to north. I'm going to hop to slide number nine. So we have two buildings, they're both speculative buildings. We're talking, it's 470,000 and 546,000 square feet. We have access, as we talked about, through two points from E-course Road. There's no access to Wick. There's no intention for anything to go down to Wick. The one caveat is that we will likely be looping the water main, so we will have some, we just have to extend the water main that's existing in Wick up to the project site and then we'll restore it. In terms of any employees, any trucks, any fire life safety, that'll all come from E-course, it won't come from Wick. One of the main things we focused on working with the planning department over the last two years is, we actually originally had three buildings planned. The original, I guess, the minimum requirement for setback from the Wick property lines is 75 feet. There's too much vegetation existing and it was too close to residential. We shifted everything, now we're over 800 feet to get to the building. So we've set everything back and shifted to leave pretty much all the vegetation on the south side of the site that's there, as well as the, there's county drains that run in there. So a lot of the focus has been to minimize the impacts to the south and setback as far as we can. In terms of residential proximity, to the east, we're 1,000 feet from the property line to the closest residential. It's about 1,300 feet to the building. A few people have asked us, but we do not have a rail spur proposed onsite. What's on the plans is actually the neighbors rail spur. It crosses over the corner of our site. It's not active. They've actually filled in the pit in the building. I don't believe they use the rail. But for Ashley Capital's Romulus Distribution Center, there's no rail plan for it. And then one of the main items that, from our original submittal, which was three months ago, to the one that's in front of you today, was a change in landscaping and screening. We've added a four-foot berm and proposed a landscape variance to allow two rows of trees 15-foot on center across the entire frontage, east, south, and west. So we think that's a considerable amount of landscaping, as well as the berm, to help from a screening perspective. So just talking on landscaping quickly, this is the kind of overall site plan. We left the conservation easement on the page here for scale. That's a zoomed-in version of it. It's a little hard to see the dots of the trees, but we have, there are two rows of eight-foot minimum trees with 15-foot on center on top of the berm. And also, the detention pond is shown as blue, just to indicate water, but it's intended to be a dry detention basin, both from an FAA reason in terms of proximity to the airport. But I know we've gotten a lot of complaints when we've met with the school and some neighbors regarding mosquitoes in the area, and we don't want a nice big detention pond there. This is a quick slide from the landscaping plan, just talking about woodland preservation and removal plans. So it's very difficult to comprehend the different topographies of the site. It's a mishmash of the pallet farm and the landfill elevations. So the areas that are being removed, have trees being removed are shown in red. So this is the, the areas in which we've calculated based on the city ordinance for tree replacements. So from a traffic perspective, we have Julie here with us tonight. She's with Lisa Manenbrink. I'm going to let Julie talk a little bit about what's proposed from a signal and a widening perspective, as well as how we got to this point and working with the county.
Good evening, Julie Kroll with Lisa Manenbrink. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the traffic. So we started working on this, I think it was somewhere around 2020, when we started looking at the traffic for this. At the time we did the study, we worked with the city to come up with the scope of work. So that's what we provided in the traffic study. As development progressed, traffic study was, site plan was updated slightly, but really didn't have too much of an impact on the traffic. So some of the key points in the findings of the traffic study, they do have two points of ingress and egress to the site, no access to Wick Road. One of the things that we looked at was adding a signal at their primary point of access. This is really to facilitate truck movements in and out, to provide those gaps in traffic, to provide, to allow trucks to get in and out of the site without impacting traffic on E-course. They did purchase the houses so that we could line up that driveway to share access and accommodate the signal for both the GM facility and this new facility, so it has a dual-use purpose. We'll be widening those existing bypass lanes and we'll be extending those out to accommodate the traffic signal, to provide left-turn lanes for those movements, so we're not backing up traffic on E-course Road. And then as part of the signal design, we'll be working with the railroad to provide preemption so we don't have an issue where you have a red light and a train comes through and you back up traffic across the track, so we don't want to do that. So the signal design will incorporate the operations of the railroad tracks. Other mitigations that we had recommended from the traffic study included signal timing optimizations. One thing that we found, especially post-COVID, is that traffic volumes are different than they were pre-COVID. One of the recommendations of the traffic study, as development progresses, you know, the county and MDOT are looking at optimizing their signals, so we recommended that as part of this study, is to look at signal timing optimizations at the study intersections that we had on, on E-course and Wayne. Obviously, they're doing a lot of construction there, so that will be part of that study, but other locations along E-course and Wayne Road and 275 were recommended. Looking at signal timings just to improve the signals and the operations of the intersections over current conditions. So when we put all that together, the results of the study were that we can absolutely mitigate the impact of this, but also improve the operations of the intersection over what you're seeing right now with some of these recommendations. So, Kyle?
Does anybody have any questions for Julie, you want me to keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. I think you stole my favor. So just to talk about project status of what we've really been working on over the last three years, we've done extensive environmental testing and have been working with Eagle, the state agency that oversees this. We've done extensive geotechnical to make sure we can support a structure, given the soil's lack of bearing capacity. We worked through our brownfield plan, our tax increment financing. We've gotten through the city and we're working on getting on the, we're on the Michigan Strategic Fund, MEDC, board meeting for July for approval, and Eagle's working on their final review for that as well. From a wetlands perspective, I know we got asked a few questions about this. We're proposing just under five acres of wetlands impacts on the site. It's largely the area that sits in between the two landfills. You have two neighbors who built a ditch in between. It's the low point on the site by a very large spot. It's been left to be overgrown for the last 50 years. It is not a pretty site. It's got tires, some random auto parts, there's kind of white suspended fluid in the water. It's not a high-quality wetland from, that's from the state's perspective, so that's really what we're filling. It runs east-west across the site between those two landfills. We touched on the traffic study and then from a design and engineering perspective, should we get special land use and site plan approval, we're hoping to get all that engineering submitted to the city with the hopes of starting construction this fall. Last slide here is just making sure we've got a summary of what we're asking for, both from a planning commission, from special land use and site plan approval. There were three waivers, I believe, that were noticed, noticed in both the MKSK and OHM reports. We had a landscape waiver, which was really related to adding more evergreens. Given the, given the site's unique, unique shape and the goal of landscaping to block views, we're proposing more trees and evergreens specifically in lieu of shrubs. Eight shrubs, I think it was eight shrubs for a tree is what we proposed, but essentially trying to build a wall with trees opposed to having shrubs that really won't do much from a screening perspective. The sidewalk payment in lieu, we are putting in a sidewalk. You can see on the traffic plan that would allow access from the railroad tracks west to our traffic signal and then we go across. We are not proposing sidewalk to continue to go further west. There's fractured land ownership as we go further west and there's also some issues with the original conservation easements that were recorded, actually go to the center line of the road, which is a mistake, but prevents us from putting in the sidewalk right now. And there is no sidewalk on, we are not proposing sidewalk on Wick, per city request. And the last two items were just the zoning board of appeals, just to be transparent, I know that's not fully vast tonight, but we will need that detention basin in the R1A zoned area. And then we also have a variance for building height and light pole height. A lot of the height-related items here just come from the need for higher internal clear height. I know you've heard this before from the North Point projects, as well as other projects in the city, that with a 35-foot height, max height in M1, you can't achieve the internal clear heights that tenants need today. So we've got our brownfield recap in here. I don't know if you want to break or just go through that, a break for questions, go through the brownfield. We've got renderings, we've got a bunch of stuff, but 25 minutes of me talking, there's got to be some questions. How would you like to handle that?
Do you want to go through brownfield or no?
I think it'd be easier if you finish.
Okay, great. From a brownfield perspective, I'm going to bring up Mark Quimby from Ashley Capital. Mark previously worked at SME and was our, was our third-party expert in brownfields. He worked on all our previous projects. He was so good, we brought him in-house. So Mark will talk through that and then we'll come back and talk about the renderings at the end.
Hello, everybody. As Kyle said, I'm Mark Quimby with Ashley Capital. So wanted to just recap the brownfield. My intent was not to go into a tremendous amount of detail, but I can go as deep as anyone wants to go if they ask those kinds of questions. So the brownfield plan was originally approved in 2022, and then what happened is we were working through the approvals with Eagle and it required us to come back and do an amendment that also supported this process. A big part of that was when we bought those additional parcels, we wanted to combine everything into one parcel and we couldn't do that because the way the brownfall, brownfield law works, it affects the tax basis for particular parcels. So we couldn't take parcels that were outside of the plan and combine them with the parcels that were in the plan. So we amended the plan to include all those new parcels and since then, our parcel combination has been approved, so everything is into one parcel. And then we went to city council and that amendment was approved. The amendment didn't change any of the money or finances in the plan, it just basically added those parcels and moved some things around. I guess what I'd like to say is like, high level, what the brownfield plan and the whole process is about is it basically is a public initiative that was initiated by the government in the 90s to deal with the land use problem, where essentially land was continuously being left vacant within the urban core and people were just building on farm fields. And they were just leaving all this vacant land for, you know, the inner-ring cities to deal with. And so what they came up with is a strategy that was kind of built on a lot of the success that they've seen, you know, in basically in what DDAs do, where you can look at making improvements to an area and then capturing the increased taxes, property taxes from those areas to reimburse basically the investment. And so that was the model for what the brownfield plan, the brownfield law was set up to do. So the idea is that you have a property that's encumbered with significant problems. It's not worth very much, but someone can make investments to make it worth more and then you can use that increase in value, which are really future taxes that would not, that would not exist, exist if not for the development, and then use those to basically reimburse those, the costs that made the whole thing work. So with this specific site, you can see there's a ton of dots on the map. That's just trying to kind of convey the scale of environmental testing and geotechnical testing that we had to do to really understand this site, to be able to even come up with a plan to successfully manage it. And as Kyle alluded to before, you know, there's several issues with it, but the biggest one is like, is the explosive levels of methane within the landfill itself, generated by the organics. And then also from a geotechnical perspective, as the soils were placed there and all the debris and whatever was buried, it's completely inconsistent. And so it really cannot structurally with, you know, withstand the building loads that we'd need without significant, you know, structural support and work. And in this case, you know, we, we've used this strategy on many sites and what we're proposing is geo-piers, which is basically a series of like stone piers that are constructed and essentially float the building on top of those. And so, you know, it's important to note that yes, it is contaminated and we understand that. And as Kyle mentioned, we've redeveloped multiple sites that are, have kind of similar profiles because a lot of the landfills, there were several landfills that were closed and so they're unlicensed. Right when the act was starting to come into play, a lot of the, you know, local places that had these things didn't really want to have to comply with the new regulations that were coming into play in the early 70s. So a lot of these just closed. So there's a lot of low-lying areas that were filled between, you know, the 40s and the 70s that were sort of filled in an uncontrolled manner. Some of them are more contaminated than others. I would say this site is fairly typical. You see a lot of like debris and, and there were some buried drums here that had chemicals in them that the EPA investigated and did some rem... in them that the EPA investigated and did some removal actions in the, and I believe it was the late 90s. And so generally speaking, to develop a site like this, you know, we have to take into account the methane problem, so the buildings will have mitigation protocols to prevent the methane from accumulating into the buildings, and then we have to deal with all the pipes. Any sewer basically that we build has to be built, sealed with chemically resistant materials, so that any of the groundwater contamination or leachate in the landfill can't infiltrate into those sewers and get into the storm system. So those are like the big things, and then the landfill itself, everything will essentially be capped when we're finished. So what the idea is that you incorporate the remedy, which is essentially covering everything and controlling it in place, with the actual construction process itself. And so this is just a quick slide, kind of highlighting the two major things, which is geo-piers, for those that are interested. It's just showing kind of, you basically ram these mushroom balls of stone, and then you can build a building on top of that. And then the vapor barrier goes underneath the entire slab, and it's almost like a roof underneath the floor that completely seals it. So methane, just like water, can't come in the roof, methane can't come in through the floor. I was going to skip over this slide, it's in there for context. This is just kind of giving the context of what a brownfield is all about and how it works. It's more, it's really reference information. As far as the TIF request, so the TIF plan, it was for $25 million that was approved. About 10.6 of that was in non-environmental activities, 14 and a half was in environmental activities. The reimbursement period is 23 years, as currently estimated. It was originally estimated a little bit higher, but the building, we played around with the buildings and were able to generate a little bit more values. One of the things that, you know, that I think, you know, we're proud of at Ashley Capital is that when we build buildings, we're not generally flipping them, we're building them and staying in the community long-term. Our Romulus Business Center has been in their city since the 90s. And so the law, the way it works is, you have a brownfield site, it's worth something, you know, whatever it is, say it's like a dollar, and you make improvements to it, and then now you can build that property, maybe it's worth $10. You can capture the increment, which would be the difference between the two, which would be that $9, and then that can be used to then reimburse the eligible activities. But one of the things that we always try to do with our brownfield plans, despite the fact that the law allows us to capture 100% of the increment, we feel that, you know, as members of the community, and there's going to be more buy-in if everybody benefits and gets immediate benefit. So when we structure our plans, we actually set it up where it's what's called a 90-10 split. So 90% of the new taxes are being generated, but 10% of the taxes are actually going through to the normal taxing jurisdictions, that's not being captured by the plan. And that way, we allow, you know, immediate, you know, tax relief to the, to the city. And I've got some graphs I can show you of what that looks like. And then another thing to understand too, is that, you know, when someone's paying taxes, right, they pay county taxes, they pay state taxes, and they pay local taxes. The brownfield plan does capture all those to deal with this site in Romulus. So in some ways, Romulus is actually leveraging other taxes from the county and the state to help a local site. And then another piece that, you know, and again, I could go into a lot of detail for this stuff, but I think what's, what's, the highlights is, is the city never really comes out of pocket. Because the way the brownfield plan works is that the brownfield activities are really the activities that are necessary to just make the site buildable. It doesn't pay for our building, that's on us. All the normal construction stuff that we build, once we have the site ready to be built on, that's normal, and that's not in the plan. The things that are in the plan are like, all the earthwork, all the special utilities, all the methane controls, all the things that we have to do just to make the site viable. And when we do that, the city doesn't have to pay anything, because basically, we have to pay the money out of pocket first. We get the site ready, then we have to build the buildings, then we have to pay our taxes, and then a portion of those new taxes that didn't, that didn't exist before, that's what reimburses us. So if any point in that chain, if we fail, you know, and we don't build the building, then there's no taxes, we're out all that money. So high level, I think what I'm, I'm going to talk, I'm, sorry, I think I'm going to mostly skip this slide, but I'll go to it if people want to see the numbers, because this graph that I made, I think is, it just makes it easier to understand. So the red line that you see on this graph, that's the current taxes being generated by the property. So that's basically how much tax is being paid. What you see there in the yellow, that's new taxes that would be generated by the property that are outside of the brownfield plan. And the reason why is because there are certain millages that are exempt from capture, the biggest one being school debt. So when the schools issue a bond, that is not affected by any brownfield plan in the city. So basically, the bond millage or the debt millage is all new tax that's just generated from the development and is not touched by it, that's the gold. Then you see the green, and what the green is, is that's the new tax generated by the 10%. And you can see that the green bar is actually larger than the red bar, so it's showing you that the 10% generated from the development, it actually exceeds even what the current taxes being paid are. So there's an immediate increase in taxes, and it's about 18% more than the total number of being generated. And then the gray line, that is showing you how much tax is basically being generated by the property that's being captured in that 90%. And then you can see in the, in the last year, after 23 years, all of that tax basically reverts back to the, to the city essentially, or the taxing jurisdictions. And there's some nuances here about whether or not the city chooses, because they can actually capture those taxes themselves if they want, and create like a local cleanup fund if they want to. If they don't, then it would just go to the regular taxing jurisdictions. And then the purple line is just showing you how much money we have to invest, so it's on the right-hand side, so that's the $25 million. That's getting reimbursed over time, so that number's going down, and then once it hits the year 23, it basically goes down to zero, and then our capture stops. And so that's, that's the recap of the brownfield, happy to go into more detail. And then the last slide is just getting to the point of, you know, why develop the site at all? Well, there isn't a lot of good, industrial development, there's not that many sites that are left that are viable, right? So a lot of these infill sites are pretty challenging. It's either typically a site that has tremendous amount of wetlands that are problems, or it's got an old factory, or in many cases, these old licensed landfills. So our view is, is we think that we can kind of find a win-win and really put this, you know, site back into productive use for the city. We estimate, you know, the development and that completion would generate at least 640 jobs, and we think that we can control the site. Because right now, when it rains, any of the water just gets into the site, gets into the leachate, some of that contamination gets into the, could get into the conservation easement. Essentially, the site's uncontrolled and vacant. What we want to do is make this development happen, and essentially cap and control the whole site, so that it's basically taken care of in perpetuity, and it's taken care of, you know, we as the owners have to take care of that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, sometimes there's, there's some discussions about the size of the buildings, or, you know, how, you know, well, why can't you just make something smaller? Sites like this are a delicate balance, right? Because essentially, what you've got is, the site cannot be developed in its current state. It's got all kinds of problems, there's contamination, there's grade issues, there's all these things. Nobody can develop this. So there's a certain amount of money that's going to take just to get it to what I would call like zero, right? Where then you would invest money and build, and build a building. The thing is, is that when you build the building, it's going to generate so much tax, and then it's a dance between, can you generate enough value from the final thing that you build that can offset the cost to even build it in the first place? And we feel with the 90-10 split and what we've proposed and the building sizes that we, that we're dealing with, that's sort of like the dance that we ended up with, where we feel like we can make the project work as it is. But, you know, and we had this discussion when we were going through the wetland permit issues as well with Eagle. If you, if you start making, if you start like shrinking a building, you're shrinking how much value is being generated, and now all of a sudden, there's not enough money to offset the cost to get you even to zero to build anything at all. And so that's why for projects like this, it really is not viable without this kind of mechanism. And then, did you want to go over these?
Thanks, Mark. The one other thing that just, we didn't put in this, but obviously, we bought the main parcel from the city, so there was a payment to the city's general fund upfront, and that was in 2020. But that doesn't really factor into the TIF tables and the dollars and cents, but the city had a negative on their, on their balance sheet, which was a liability, and they got money out of it when we purchased it from them. So I think I mentioned these three projects in passing. I don't think we need to walk through one by one. The first two share similar landfill redevelopments. They had geo-piers and they had methane membranes. All were similar-sized buildings, have been standing for a few years and have had no issues geotechnically. And the third project's just down the road in Van Buren Township on E-course Road, so it was, I would say, is close and is an indicative project of what we've done recently. We've got FedEx in one of those buildings, and then Arnex Energy, the big battery company, who's trying to make the American-made battery, is in the next building there. So we put a few, Brandon, do you want to come talk about these quickly? No, volunteer, there you go.
Good evening, my name's Brandon Kritzman, principal at Detroit Architectural Group. I believe you guys have a copy of all of these renderings in your package, and I'm going to say we'll walk through the series here. There's also been some renderings, or I guess some graphics that were shared by OHM as part of their report. We do have renderings that kind of mimic those same shots as well. You know, you've got all sorts of technical information that's been thrown at you, but oftentimes, people just want to understand what it looks like. And so these renderings are a great opportunity to prepare, in a very graphic nature, what that looks like, translated through a lot of the technical data that you, you make your way through. Now, a lot of these are the aerial shots that you'll see, and, you know, unless you're taking off or landing at the airport, you're not really necessarily going to see this. But this is a shot from the north, looking south at the buildings from an aerial perspective. You can see that building in the front left, that's the existing building that is on an adjacent parcel. The two buildings at hand at the moment are those two buildings that you see in back there. And as has been mentioned, I think it's, it's that direction that we're almost 2,000 feet from the road on that one. But, so it's set quite a ways back, so you really have to look at an aerial perspective to try and get an understanding. You can see from this, it's a much higher view, you can see a full overview of the site, the existing building, you can see the new access road. The intersection that was talked about is right down there in the bottom left of the site, and you can see the rail line that runs diagonally to the east of the property. So you've got the existing residential out there to the east, but this is a good graphic representation of the landscaping that has been proposed and the new development. So again, a view looking south, this is from the other direction, a little farther east up the road. You can see the new berm and landscape buffer that has been added since the previous submission that runs along the railway. So if you make your way onto the site, this is a close-up view of a, kind of perspective view of the corner of the buildings. The two buildings are very similar in design and detail. There are these kind of more articulated entrance points at each of the four corners, and in fact, on the southernmost building, we had some additional articulation of windows on the south side of that facade. So this view is actually, this view is from the driveway, as you've made your way onto the site, passing the, the original building. It's kind of in that area where the driveway takes a little turn to the right, and you get a view of the buildings. Just a view from just above that road to the north of the site at the intersection location. So obviously, there's a lot of landscaping that has been added and purposely located along the main thoroughfares to provide additional screening to the buildings from any public There's a view more from the west side, aerial view. That's really the end of the, of the initial rendering series. So one item that was shared in OHM's initial report was that there was photographs taken from different vantage points. If you run through to the end here, we stole their graphic image that outlines where the camera locations were, shots one, two, three, four, five, and six. In the OHM report, there was actually two photographs that were attributed to shot one, so we've represented all of those. In the, in the report that was provided to us, and obviously, everyone's concerned about what they're going to see from different areas, from adjacent residential, what you're going to see from public thoroughfares, what those graphics that were shared in the report indicated was just a wireframe model, and I don't want to make any assumptions about how that was prepared, but I believe it was just a photograph taken from the various vantage points shown on the map, and then a wireframe illustration put over the top of that in some sort of PDF editor. So what we did was we actually physically modeled the entirety of the site, and we went in using Mr. Webb's topography, using the landscaping, and that model that you saw actually reflects the proposed topography and grades on the entirety of the site. And then additionally, for everything that was off-site, we used the USGS data that's publicly available that shows the adjacent topographies. So the views that you see here in this shot and the subsequent shots are what you would be seeing from those actual vantage points. We did our best in a, frankly, a relatively conservative manner to locate the landscaping that you see on these renderings in the exact position that they are found today. And our general, I mean, the trees are going to look quite similar to the trees that you find out on site. It's going to be, you know, the, the species of the tree may very well be different, but what you see here is as close a representation as we could get to what the existing conditions are out on site. So this is the view from the road to the north. Looking past the existing building, you can see, if you zoom in frankly in the back left, that's where the proposed building is. As I said, there were two renderings shown from that particular location. Really, the view of the building from this position is pretty minimal. This is a view from the back corner of an adjacent property, and it's backed by the dumpster location that's in the back of that existing building. So this third shot, this is the view that you would see in that corridor that's cut through, I believe, is that an ITC line running through there? So the, the high-tension power lines that are run through there, that structure that you see in a very generic manner off to the left there, that's an existing residential building. And frankly, when you look at the overheads, all of those buildings, all of those homes in that area have a pretty significant amount of tree coverage immediately behind those properties. We've actually removed several trees from this, so that you can get a sense of where the building is and where you would see it in its actual perspective. Now, this view is from the opposite end of the project, from the corner of the playground at the school. As you can see, it's really, it's not anticipated to even be seen. Now certainly, there's a, we've, we've tried to incorporate some views that are, I'm going to have, see there's deciduous trees through there, and during the winter, they're going to drop their leaves, they will be somewhat able to see it in a greater capacity, so we've often represented a lot of those trees without leaves, as you see, not just trying to throw dead trees out everywhere. That's done in an effort to try and show more of the view. And here, you can see just what I was talking about, and we pulled the leaves off of a lot of those trees, so that you can see it just over the ball field there. And then just some general information, which I've already explained about how the topography and the site was modeled and put together.
Thanks, Brandon. So that finishes and wraps up everything that we had prepared, so I know that was extensive, and there, there are a bunch of questions, so.
Okay. Thank you. I'll ask our administrative team if they have anything to comment before we open the public hearing.
I do have a few items that we want, a few items of housekeeping that we want to take care of, some items that didn't get added into the recommended resolution, and then a couple items in our report that I wanted to clarify. I'm not really going to go over the capacity of the infrastructure that is out on the site. I know that there are questions, and I would I know that there are questions and I would be happy to answer any questions as the planning commission goes through and addresses those to us. The first one's an easy one. Underneath the lighting, there was a note that was left on from the previous letter, the review letter. The, it says minimum light levels were not met in many areas of the site. That should not have been, that should not have remained. The lighting plans are acceptable as proposed, as long as the variance is granted for the pole height that would be going to the BZA. So that was an easy one. Going to the waivers and variance section, there is a couple waivers that were not included in the planning report under the resolution. And I just wanted to walk through them real quick and potentially add them to the resolution recommended. The curb design, the petitioner had asked to decrease the typical truck, the typical trailer storage area curb. We typically see curb that's 12 inches by 36 inches in trailer storage areas. They would like to install a seven inch by 12 inch, which is greater than the standard curb and gutter. And the applicant had indicated that the, this type of curb and gutter is used throughout their projects in southeast Michigan. We had asked for additional, just additional picture, pictures or additional items that show that the, those other developments were being maintained successfully and didn't have any trash or any running off the back of the curb with the trailers as the parking that was occurring. We do feel like that waiver couldn't be supported, and if you are in support of that waiver, that needs to be added to the resolution. Additionally, the landscaping waivers need to be added to the resolution. And those are, come from both our letter and also from MKSK's letter. The three property lines, the east, the south, and the west property line, all require a Type A buffer between the residential use and the industrial use. That needs to be clarified on the engineer's list of waiver requests. And the applicant has proposed to put the double row of evergreens around those three property lines in order to provide the screening. And so the, the buffer requirement would be a reduction in the, or a substitution, rather, for the plantings to be evergreen rather than to be the mixture that it typically is of deciduous and shrubs. We do support this as a screening, a screening item for this project. The other landscaping that needs to be addressed. The building appearance does not need to follow the appearance requirements in 1301 if it's set 300 foot back from the road right of way, and if they increase the greenbelt frontages by 50% for landscaping. That 50% was not calculated in this landscaping calculation. We do believe that there's the ability to get the 50% increased landscaping in the frontage, and that would need to be incorporated and reviewed again. Then the rain gardens that's in the front was not treated as a detention. It does have plantings all around it, and we are just asking that the applicant provide the calculations so that the, that we see that the detention intent for landscaping was met. Finally, the last one is that the frontage, the greenbelt frontage was reduced with the wetland. I'd have to look back. The calculation reduced the greenbelt frontage by 209 feet for the wetland. And while we agree that plantings cannot occur there because of the conservation easement, the frontage, as defined in the zoning ordinance, needs to include the entire length of the property. And then the landscaping would need to be dispersed over the rest, the remaining section of the frontage that can have plantings. So that would also need a waiver if you wanted to allow them to, to decrease the frontage length. So that was a lot that I just threw at you that was not in the resolution. And I'd be happy to talk about any of those items or any additional items that you have.
Anybody else have any other comments, questions? Because I'll turn it over to the public hearing, if, if not.
Best to go with the.
Okay. Excuse me. Let the record show we have on file an affidavit, first-class male. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter, please raise your hand when you're called on. Come to the podium, give us your name and address and your comments. And woman in the yellow, you were first up.
My name is Jerry Shout, and I currently live on Wick Road, which is going to be across the street from whatever it is you people are proposing. I know that you are stating that this will have no impact on our traffic. However, we currently are dealing with semi-trucks going up and down our road on a constant daily, every couple hour basis, every hour basis. The traffic has increased dramatically. Get it. And you don't have to tell me where you live, but do any of you want to live around this? Do any of you live around anything like this? My answer is probably no.
We need to have you speak into the microphone, because people at home are.
My name is Jerry Shout, and I live on Wick Road, right across the street from where they're proposing this monstrosity.
Sure.
The ones down on Vining that they currently have being built pale in comparison to the size of what is being proposed here. I've gone by, I've taken pictures, I'd be more than happy to show you. They say that there's going to be no impact on Wick Road. I don't believe that. We've got signs right now at both ends that say, "No commercial vehicles," and we are inundated with commercial vehicles. So if any of you want to live around this, get with me afterwards, because our house will be going up for sale if this thing goes in. This is.
Where do you live on Wick Road?
Right across the street from where they're wanting to put this. And I did my own little study here. The only reason we were notified is because these are all over 80,000 square, or these two are over 80,000 square feet. One of them is almost six times over 80,000 square feet, is actually 5.87 times over 80,000 square feet. The other one is 6.84 times larger than 80,000 square feet. They say it'll have no impact on the railroad. We currently have trains stopping for 20 and 30 minutes, so you're going to tell me that this is not going to affect the train traffic on Wick Road? Again, I'm sorry, I do not believe that. So we're looking at over 1,016,661 square feet of industrial going in across the street from us, across, next to schools. You might call our woods garbage, but I personally like to see trees. I don't care how overgrown they are, I would rather see that than whatever it is you people are wanting. So seriously, if you want this so bad, buy my house. And I bet you there's a few other people here who would have the same thing to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Did I see, in the white? Yes, you were next, and then you, sir, in the black.
Hi, my name is Teresa Pacorni, and I live on Cogswell Street between Wick and Tyler. And I am concerned about the view that the elementary school and the junior high are going to have of this property. The children are challenged enough now for school not to have to be able, when the leaves all fall, look at something like whatever's going on behind the school that they can view, instead of day, you know, they'd be daydreaming out the window of how they would like to drive that big truck that's sitting over there idling for the last four hours or whatever. So that's one of my concerns. Also, one of my concerns is, right now, they don't have an entrance onto Wick Road. But how long is it going to take in the future for them to switch that around and have an entrance coming onto Wick Road right by the schools? We have so much traffic going down Wick Road right now because of the detour, it's unbelievable. People are speeding 50, 60 miles per hour down the road just to get to where they're going. Who's to say that's not going to happen now with more detours or whatever, people not wanting to go by there, stop at that light, whatever? Sure, cut down Cogswell and up Wick Road, why not? So I don't think it's a good idea for this to go up in my neighborhood. And for where they're building, is this by chance where they have a dirt bite track back there where the kids roam around? Because that's just a bunch of concrete and stuff back there. It's not like landfill. It is landfill, but it's not garbage landfill. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is James Garrison, I live on Ozga, across the street from the Romulus Engine Plant. There's four houses right down the road. I have a hard time believing that that access is going to support the amount of traffic that those sized buildings have. Again, imagining different access points. Impact on the conservation. Another question of mine is, I guess, with these already being so elevated, when they start disturbing it, what's the impact on my backyard? I'm probably one of the closest houses that faces backwards to this. Other than the streets on E-course, I'm on the last road on that Ozga Street. So you start moving around toxic waste and whatever's there, the chemicals and the drums, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about what that does to my backyard. My daughters all walk through those woods on a regular basis, so. Traffic, road construction, there's days that I can't even get out of my street right now. I mean, that we sit there for 20, 30 minutes trying to pull out on an E-course road. I guess, again, I'm just having a hard time believing that it's going to be as good or better based on the traffic plans that they did. The amount of, you know, the train stopping, the impact that has already, there is nowhere to walk along that road that's safe right now, as it is, right? And so you're just adding more semi-traffic, more, you know, employee traffic, more people that don't care about the area that are driving here to come to work. We, we love our woods in the back, and this definitely is, in my opinion, detrimental. I'm concerned what it's going to do to my property value. You know, what, one of the benefits that we have is that it's kind of a rural area in the middle of the city. And that's taken, this is taking that away for most of us. So, you know, I'm concerned about eventually the zoning expanding and us, you know, essentially being pushed out of our house. I mean, that's what it feels like to me, but maybe I'm wrong, I guess I'd just like some of those answers, those questions answered, I'd like to know. A big point of emphasis for us is, is some sort of testing before and after to show that our property's not being impacted by the movement of the contaminated soil. Because I just, I have a hard time believing that, with us being that close, that it's not going to have some impact on us, some impact on the water that runs through there, the wildlife that's in there. I just don't, I don't think it's reasonable, but that's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Coralie Jeller-Mino, and I live on Cogswell, in between Wick and E-course. And I go along with most of the things that everybody else has been saying. The traffic from E-course Road goes right around my house. I got to stand in front of my house for a good five, 10 minutes to walk across the street to get to my mailbox right now, because it's detoured. You are putting a commercial site, this is all residential. This, all the way up to Vining, is residential. E-course, not so much. I can't understand why half of this site is even being looked at, being plopped right in the middle of residential, right where our junior high and our elementary school is, and right around the corner, we got the high school. So you're actually turning our whole area where we're raising our kids, where we're sending them to school, into a commercial being. The ambiance of our area is no longer going to be the same. Our kids are going to go to school looking at a great big warehouse off of Wick Road. And they're going to sit in their school rooms, looking out in the wintertime, seeing this great big commercial warehouse. I don't know if any of you live in that residential area, but I don't think you'd want it being in your neighborhood either. And I think it's ridiculous that it's gotten to this point that everybody hasn't been notified before now. I've been there for 30 years and things have changed. My husband's family has owned that property for over 60 years, and it was dirt road back then. And it's changed a lot. I don't think we should allow commercial into residential area. This is going to do nothing but pollute the atmosphere and our waters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Was this the second speaker?
My name's Franklin Shout, I live on 36739 Wick Road, just down from Railroad Tracks. And I have concerns, like everybody else, with the amount of train traffic we're going to have. My wife's mentioned 15, 20 minutes with the train, they park there for an hour or more at a time. I know Ashley Capital says it's, they're not going to use the train, but come on, you know? I, I can't buy that. I, I, because I sit and listen, the word landfill being spewed out. It's not a landfill. Some people illegally dump some crap back in there, which they shouldn't have. But I drove for levy a gravel train, and I went to landfill every day, so I know what a landfill is. And that back there in the woods is not a landfill. So that gives me concern right there, along with, they mentioned Hazel Park Racetrack, and they said they built on a landfill there. Hazel Park Racetrack was not a landfill, it was a racetrack. So there's two dishonesties right there. I mean, I have a hard time believing anything after that in the truck traffic that we have. People are not going to want, they, they're going to come out there in them trucks, and they already know there's an easier way around an E-course intersection even after it's done. There's an easier way around, it's right down our street with them semis. You know, and I have to ask every one of yous from Ashley, how many of yous live on Wick Road? How many of yous live in Romulus? One. Would you want this in your backyard?
No.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Right.
All right. None of yous want it in your backyard, but you're proposing it in our backyard, it's like it's no big deal. You know? They mentioned jobs, that it makes so many jobs, they said that about Amazon, too. That a handful of people from our community that work in Amazon is a joke. They come out of Amazon and they fly every which direction but Romulus. So it's not really going to make a lot of jobs for our city. You know, they talked about nothing really out of pocket for the city. Well, nothing really, but what's going to come out of pocket? You guys are not going to gain nothing for what, 23 years? And you showed it on that, 23 years, is it worth it? Are they still going to be there in 23 years? Look at Detroit, everything has closed down over the years, and there's this factory after factory after factory sitting empty. There are some properties to look at. Hey, they might be a challenge, too, but they were already factories, for God's sakes, you know? And I mentioned wetland, too. Yeah, we have Michigan Rattlers, Masagnas, right out back of our place in the woods. I've caught them in the yard, had to turn them loose because they're protected. So are there any over there? If they're protected, how are we building on a wetland? Now, it's something to think about. Plus the eagle that's living, there's a couple eagles that live in the trees in them woods that are going to be tore down. I see them on a daily basis lying over my house screaming out, where are they going to go now? You know, we're going to tear down 100 and some acres of woods and graciously put in a few rolls of trees and landscaping. What's wrong with the trees that are already there? I don't know, I think it's a big mistake, I think it's going to just, it's going to make more hassles for everybody that lives there. Like my wife said, if you guys want to, we're selling our house. We already bought a house in Alabama. The minute we got this in the mail, that's how I'm out of here. Y'all do whatever you're going to do, but I'm here for my neighbors.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Stanley Stanek. I live on E-course Road between Osgo and this site. Currently, we're plagued with flooding issues due to these Romulus roads, Romulus properties and such. We all know that the McCory Drain cannot keep up with its current volume. Like the gentleman said, what's going to happen with my home value when this goes up, if this goes up? What is this going to do for the current flooding situations at hand that are not being addressed? These are the things that are really, I'm questioning about this. I know that they're going to do this dry well, however, will it keep up? Will it hold? Because if that's the case, that's one thing. However, I don't see it happening. The McCory Drain is going to have to be addressed to accommodate all this runoff. So I would hope somebody would look into that.
Thank you. Anyways, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Leah Garrison. I live on Osgo Street. When I first saw this, I was pretty alarmed. My questions would be, how will, and I think my husband over here addressed this, how will disturbing the soil impact our residents, the schools, the drains in the area? I'm wondering what the typical air or noise pollution levels are for a development of this size? Because we're going to be taking out a lot of hazardous materials or covering them or capping them, but then we're also going to be bringing them in with the development of this size. How will capping an entire property impact the surrounding wetland conditions since they're typically created by the runoff water and in low-lying areas? Will this eventually dry out some areas and then create more opportunity for businesses to continue to build on this area? Will it no longer be considered a wetland area if the, if the water can't get to where it needs to be? Talking about a building this size with the wildlife, I know lighting was discussed. That does impact wildlife. It's not just the noise and the size and taking down trees. It's also, you know, the lighting that's going to be out continuously twenty-four hours a day that's going to impact wildlife. And how is that going to impact any residential areas around it? You know, is it going to light up the sky? You know, you're going to have trees around it, but, I mean, we have a GM plant down the road from us that we still get a ton of light from. And I mean, it's quarter, quarter to a half a mile down the road and it lights up our whole yard. I also noticed when I was doing a little bit of research that there's a AT&T cell phone tower that's been in progress for a while now. I don't know if that's going to go up somewhere or involved in any of this, but it would be nice to know. And then the, I guess in some of the images, I'm having a hard time seeing the existing houses that are close to the front of E-course. So it's hard for me to determine where that pond is going to be, that the R1A zone, dry detention basin, where that's going to be in terms of where the houses are in front, like along E-course. How close that's going to be like to the schools, between E-course and Wick, I guess, like where that's going to be? I'm just having a hard time envisioning that. But the fact that it's right in the middle of the protected wetland area is pretty concerning. Again, it's just moving things around. That, I think, is the most concerning to me. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Anyone else? No one else wants to speak? Okay, we will close that portion of the meeting. I will open up the commissioners for comments and questions.
Madam Chair.
Mr. McNally.
Okay, through the chair, through, I guess, petitioner at this point, how is the material that's being moved around on the site or moved off the site dealt with? Is there mitigation plans that are regulated that control how that is dealt with? The material, the dirt, the earth, whatever?
Sure, through the chair. Yes, that's regulated by Eagle. And so Eagle is currently reviewing our work plan to them that is part of the, like the tax financing plan with the brownfield plan to go, and it's their responsibility in terms of approving what we're proposing on doing.
Either way, they're involved to tell you how to do it and how the best way it is to deal with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to talk to you. Couple, couple of questions regarding the brownfield. You mentioned that there would be some type of a vapor barrier, some type of a wrapping that goes down into the ground. Being in the real estate industry, I do understand that there's a life expectancy of most things that we build. There's also a propensity for things to deteriorate. For the general public, let's take the pipes in the city of Detroit. We know that their sewer systems, because they were only designed to last for so long, they're deteriorating. So most people at some point have to have those pipes, those galvanized pipes taken out because they do deteriorate. Anything we humans build will deteriorate. So is there a plan for the building? Because you mentioned that it's going to float in a sense and that those utilities that are underground and the pipings will be wrapped. What's the life expectancy of those things? Because at some point, things seep. It just, what happens?
Yeah. So a couple, a couple of things to unpack. So as far as the utilities go, you're correct. Like a lot of the infrastructure that was installed, you know, back in the day in Detroit and whatnot, has significantly degraded. Most of that has to do with either, you know, the pipes that are really old or made out of wood or they're made out of brick and things like that. Newer materials have a much longer life expectancy, in particular with like high-density plastics. So most of the pipes that we've been building would be those types of pipes that have high-density plastics that are, I don't, I'm not even really sure what the life expectancy is because it's so long. It's, you know, it's, we don't really talk about it. As far as the, when I said float, what I'm trying to convey is that what happens is the pier system that's underneath the building basically absorbs the load and spreads it across the entire footprint of the building. So in a sense, the weight of the building is floated across those piers, but it's not really floating. And then a traditional building slab is essentially constructed over top of that system. And then the vapor barrier that we're referring to is built under that. The vapor barrier materials are regulated by, you know, Eagle has to approve them and also the EPA has guidance on these kinds of things. And they're basically made out of very specific materials that are chemically resistant with long life expectancies that are expected to be longer than the life of the building. And a lot of times when you have deterioration, it's because of interactions with different types of things, right? Like, you know, acidity or pH or something like that in the background. In this case, everything is encapsulated underneath the building floor. So there, it really, it's life expectancy exceeds the life of the building.
So it's that encapsulating material that I'm questioning, not the other things that go in it or above it.
Sure.
So when you encapsulate it so that it's resistant to deterioration due to the pH balance difference or the chemicals that are down there because it is dirty soil, what's the life expectancy of the material that's actually encapsulated in? That's my concern.
Oh, I understand, sorry. It's the material itself. So it's not like there's a regular pipe that's wrapped in something. Literally, the entire pipe itself is built out of high-density plastics that are chemically resistant. Yeah, well, and the organic content is low in the soils. But ultimately, I think what you're referring to is the durability of the material itself. And these things are regulated specifically for these kinds of uses. And they're mandated high-density, you know, plastics that basically, I mean, they're far beyond our lifetime in terms of their resistance.
And that's mandated by Eagle as well? Is that correct?
The, it starts to get complicated in terms of which material you're referring to, but basically there are standards and there are, there are organizations and whatnot that endorse, you know, that have to do testing for chemical resistance and for longevity. And those are all looked at individually based on the types of materials. So like somebody might regulate the pipe, someone might regulate the vapor barrier, but all of those things have to comply with industry standards.
Okay. Thank you. Next question I have is actually for the woman who talked about traffic study. So I need a couple of things clarified. You didn't sound definitive in the widening of the street, the turn lanes and the signals. Those are definitely going in.
Yes, as part of the site plan, yes. We have a meeting with Wayne County, DTE, and the city tomorrow.
So my other concern was, which is the same concern and problem that I have with the current construction going on at the corner of Wayne and E-course, it's short-sighted. What I mean by short-sighted is they're trying to solve a problem that we have today with traffic. We're talking about progress. We're talking about building. We know E-course is a hot mess. Yes, we know that Wick has issues because E-course is a hot mess. Currently, they're dealing with the current problem. That doesn't give the city the opportunity to grow and to invite other businesses or homes. I'd like to see a traffic study that kind of looks more futuristic because at some point, whatever tenant might be there, you may get a tenant that has a heavier use, not to mention that we're still building on Vining and E-course. So you got that traffic that's going to add to the traffic that's already here, that's going to add to the traffic for this building, not considering the fact that we have other buildings that are going up and down E-course. So expanding that one area, I think the whole thing needs to be done down E-course. But my concern was that you said that the traffic study was done with current traffic only. That is short-sighted and not sufficient as far as I'm concerned.
So let me, let me explain a little bit how the traffic studies were done. So when we did the traffic study, the traffic study encompassed all the intersections on E-course Road. A study included one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, fifteen intersections. So we had a very comprehensive traffic study that we did. We did the traffic volumes. We polled pre-COVID because we did this kind of in the middle of COVID, so we couldn't poll. We did traffic counts and then we had to, what we do is we actually COVID-adjusted them to make them be like what traffic was like before COVID happened. Because when we collected the counts, they were not normal traffic counts. So we had to adjust the traffic counts. In addition, we applied a annual growth rate on top of those COVID-adjusted volumes to account for additional traffic volumes that we anticipate to be throughout the network. So we basically did a very comprehensive traffic impact study that incorporated not just this development, but all the development that we anticipate to be growing in the area to evaluate the impact. So we, we weren't as just looking at an isolated location. We looked at all those fifteen intersections in addition to the site driveway location when we came up with the recommendations. So that's why the recommendations included a lot of off-site mitigations for signal timing optimization, because that's what we were seeing, was that a lot of the timings weren't necessarily adjusted as all this development has come on board. So that was what the mitigations were, in addition to the signal at this location to accommodate the future traffic generated by this site and the existing traffic from the GM facility. But one of the requirements in Romulus, so right now, this is spec. We have no idea what's going in. We had to make some assumptions. When they come in with an end user, we have to compare the data that we evaluated in the traffic study to assume that that was, is still good, like ours, and that our assumptions are still valid. So let's say they come in with some really extensive user, then all bets are off. This, this traffic study has to be updated to evaluate what their new end user comes in with. So that if they come in with something that's less or equal to what they've already done, then this is consistent with the assumptions that we made previously.
So my question is, when you said you anticipated future growth, what does that look like?
So we used a 0.96% growth rate and that was provided by the city for our use in the traffic study. So we did evaluate that to the build-out year. So we applied that. When we did this study originally, it was a two-year build-out. So we applied that background growth rate in addition to the COVID-adjusted numbers. So basically, we looked at a 2019 traffic volumes, because all the volumes right now, if we were to collect right now, it would be a mess, right? Because of all the construction and everything that's going on. So we used those pre-COVID volumes, COVID-adjusted them, applied a background growth rate to get two on top of the volumes that we adjusted. So it was pretty conservative in our estimation of evaluating a background scenario and then added our site-generated traffic on top of it.
So you did two-year?
We did.
Just two years?
That was.
So what happens after two years and the tenant that you don't have currently grows exponentially in two years and now that traffic study is no longer valid? So do, is, I don't know, I don't know if this might be to Carol, the question, that what happens if we have to look at that again and make some more adjustments? Because now, two years is, is still short-sighted to me. I'm just saying. Because it takes two years sometimes to get a building up and going. So I would want to say that that's something we need to look at, because I'm extremely sensitive with our roads around here and the traffic, because it's a hot mess and I spend majority of my time on the roads. And I'm always trying to find a back way through the city so that I'm not stuck for a hundred years at one of those stop signs or trying to get through a light. And I got to watch it change five times before I get to it, especially if we get a train in there. So there's a whole lot that actually needs to be considered, but I don't, I don't think two years is forward-thinking enough. So, but that's something that I would be hoping that, Carol, if it's possible, to have something in place that says if, if we start having issues where in the next couple of years, we have to look at this again, and then they're going to have to make some more adjustments.
We can, as part of the special land use approval, we can. And as part of our current practice, you've seen it on a lot of other site plans, and Julie, actually, you mentioned it, you're, you're the one that's updating them as many of these are coming in right now. So we probably want to put an, add a condition to the list of conditions that say certainly we're going to start with once those occupants, once those tenants are coming in for, for the CFOs, that we do, you know, that we look at this. And we've got a process set up right now. Julie gets information. She updates the traffic study that you've got before you now, based on the tenant that comes in. OHM looks at it and we, we move on accordingly. So I think that will cover it. Do you think, do we need to add anything else?
I don't think that there should be anything else added other than the, that process that would be gone through during the reoccupancy permit. We, we take a look at the trip generation that was in the initial traffic impact study and look at the new trip generation with the known owner or the known user and determine whether or not there's going to be any additional adverse impact. And at that point, then additional mitigation measures can be looked at.
Thank you. So my last couple of questions for the gentleman who started us off, if you don't mind. So a couple of things. I know one of the residents mentioned something about the promise of jobs that wasn't viewed as fair when Amazon came in here with some of the, some of their proposals. And I know that we talked to North Point about this and we did talk to Amazon about this and a couple of others that came after that regarding some way to give Romulus residents first shot at these, whether, I think it was, I don't know if it was North Point or Amazon who said that they would do a job fair. I do know that we did have conversation with Amazon and part of the issue where people not passing certain tests that they had to pass, which was an issue. But if there's something that can be made in consideration, I know back in the past, some companies have told us, you can't do that. Well, Detroit's been doing it for a hundred years. It can't be done.
We can absolutely do that. And I think that's something we've put in leases in other municipalities in terms of, you know, we can't mandate a certain number of people, but in terms of a, a first shot at the jobs or a job, a job fair up front or a local hiring preference, we can put that in our leases with those tenants.
And you mentioned about the, the tree line. And I know one of the residents mentioned something about the sight line. It was a concern of mine as well. So I do know that when we see these renderings, they're wonderful sometimes, but when you plant these plant these plantings, they're babies. So are we planting them tall enough so that they start out shielding or are we waiting for 20 years for them to grow?
So that's why we mentioned, they're eight feet tall trees and that's why we were putting them 15 feet on center. So, uh, right, we're not transporting, uh, 40-foot trees and it's not, those trees wouldn't survive. What we proposed in terms of, uh, additional trees in lieu of, um, the shrubs was intended for this specifically, we were talking evergreens, right? Because we, we do have a lot of deciduous trees out there that, uh, during the, during the winter don't have leaves. So, uh, we tried to find a year-round solution, um, on top of this berm, uh, to help from the screening perspective. There's also, there's a specific mention in the public hearing, uh, regarding the school. Kind of, we can't see it on this. If, we met with the school and, sorry, it's on the other slide deck. Um, we met with the school and there actually are 10 trees that are up against the, uh, school's fence line. So we're working with the school, um, to do some improvements along that fence line. So trees closer, uh, evergreens closer are better than evergreens that are far away. So, uh, we're making sure we address that. That's not in lieu of the berm and the trees, it's trees closer.
Now, you say evergreens, I'm not 100% sure what that means. So is that kind of like an herbivity, something that keeps us instantly, is greenish year round?
Correct.
And it grows and it becomes like a, a shield or like a, um, evergreen fence, if you could say?
Correct. That's the intention.
Okay. And that'll be on top of the berm. How tall is that berm?
Four feet.
So we're basically 12 feet then?
Correct.
Roughly. How tall is the building?
The building is intended to be, the top peak height is 47 feet.
Okay. That, that, that's a little bit. But actually, I think that might be it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I have, um, two questions. Uh, I'm not sure who I'm to address the questions to, so I'll just start with you, sir. Yeah, in the paperwork, it says light manufacturing. So who, who are you targeting? Is this going to be like a cross-dock operation? Is this going to be, um, light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing? Um, what, what kind of tenant are you targeting?
So I think that the tenant set that's in, um, our Van Buren projects, um, and also in the Romulus Business Center are indicative. You'll have some distribution users, some warehouse users, um, and you'll have, um, well, no heavy manufacturing. This should be, you know, when we call light assembly, so maybe some auto sub-assembly, but there's no stamping plants or, you know, heavy intense users intended to be in this and that actually doesn't work in zoning classification as well. So M1 doesn't allow that.
Okay. All right.
And, sorry, you, you mentioned cross-dock. The, the, the building is designed as a cross-dock, but in terms of a true cross-dock truck terminal, you know, in one, in one side, out the other, within 20 minutes, that is not what this building is intended for.
Yeah, because that, that will flow into my second question with respect to traffic. How the building is used is how it would generate the traffic. Now, we, we've not seen traffic study of what the building itself would generate, but we've just seen proposed of what, or, or how the, the streets will be affected. So I'd like to chat a little bit with the traffic engineer, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. So, um, in figure four of the background traffic volume, um, do you have that?
Give me one second.
Oh, no problem.
Okay.
Okay. So the, the first one, um, I'm going to look at is, um, section eight or number eight, which is, um, Wayne and E-course. You have the traffic arrow pointing south, so you're making a right from E-course to Wayne. It's, the number there is 59103?
Yes.
You have that? Okay. Very good. So, um, if you don't mind, if you'd like to look at figure seven, which is the future traffic volume and the same number eight, which is going east, turning south, so you're going from E-course to Wayne?
Yes.
The number there is 71134?
Yes.
Okay. So that is a 16, 17% increase in traffic. Would that be correct?
So what you're seeing is figure five and figure six are added to figure four. So figure four is the background, so that's that background growth rate that I was talking about that we applied to the existing traffic, that we, the existing, which I, my COVID-adjusted numbers. And the background growth with the 0.96% for two years. And then, so that's figure four. And then we, the site generated, so we have two different, two different site generations. One, we have cars, vehicles, people that work there. That's the majority of your trip generation. And those are distributed throughout the network. So that's what you're seeing on figure five. And so that same volume is eight in the morning and 24 in the afternoon. And then in figure six, those are trucks. So I've got four trucks turning right and seven in the, in the afternoon. So four in the morning, seven in the afternoon. So those ones added to figure four will give you your total, which is the 71 and the 134.
Yeah, so there's a 16% increase in traffic?
For that movement.
For that movement, correct. So which means that Wayne Road's traffic is going to increase by about 16%? Based on?
Just that, not, and not in totality. So that we're just talking about a right turn movement.
Yeah, a right turn movement from, um, E-course. So whether or not it's coming from your property, um, from that area going to Wayne Road, we should expect a 16% increase in traffic?
No, because that's just the right turn movement. So the total volume of right turn, total volume of traffic on Wayne Road would be that right turn movement plus the through movement. So the vehicles coming southbound through, plus the left turn movement coming from, on the westbound left turns, that's your total southbound traffic.
Yeah, I'm saying from E-course to Wayne.
So 16% increase on the right turn movement?
Correct.
Not a 16% increase on Wayne Road?
Yeah, I, I said a 60% increase from E-course to Wayne.
Just on the right turn movement?
Correct. So that meant something from E-course traveling east has generated that traffic?
Yes, it's, we're assuming that was based on the spec building and the assumptions in the study.
Okay, good. So it, it's safe to say that, um, this development will generate traffic that would increase traffic on Wayne Road?
Yes, we anticipate vehicles generated by the site, the majority of which are vehicles, not trucks, will be generated on Wayne Road, E-course Road, um, 275.
Well, we, we, we don't know that because on figure six, we talk about just trucks, but there is no future site generation for trucks. So, so we really don't know. We don't know if it's going to be cars, if it's going to be trucks, but we, it is safe to assume that with two 80,000 square foot building, buildings, there will be an increase in trucks on Wayne Road from E-course.
For the purposes of the study, we assumed that some of the traffic would use E-course Road to go to 75 and some would use, I'm going to pull up.
Well, I'm, I'm really not seeing it on this because, I mean, I've, I've looked at different directional movements and I'm not seeing an increase. That's what I was hoping to see, an increase from E-course going towards 275, but I am not seeing it. In fact, I'm seeing more traffic. Like if you look at number four, um, going east, we go from 404, 414 to 470, 444. So Cogswell and E-course going east, we're going to see another 16% increase in traffic.
So if you look at the table six that's in our traffic study, it's on page nine of the study, um, it's at the bottom of section seven. This is the distribution that we used to send all the cars throughout the network. So the distribution is quite extensive. So you can see where we sent the cars and the cars are based on our entire network of traffic, all the cars in, all the cars out, and that's the majority of trips generated by the site are the people that work here. Now the trucks, we have a different distribution. So you can see from the distribution in table seven where we sent the trucks to and from. So two from the north on 275, south on 275, and then east on 94 and west on 94. So the routes to get to those ultimate points, that's how we send them. So if you want to see like the actual turning movements, that's for the trucks, is on figure six. So that's where we sent, so the majority of those intersections, you'll see a lot of the turning movements are zero.
Well, this, this is proposed because we, we, we're going to hope that the truck driver does not turn on Wayne Road, but based on what we see right now, you know?
On Wayne Road or on Wayne Road?
Yeah, from, from your property to turn on E-course and then make that right turn to Wayne Road because that's where we're seeing the 16% increase in traffic.
So we anticipated that like 50% of the traffic would go to the west and 50% of the traffic would go to the south, basically, to 94.
Trucks and cars.
No, trucks, cars are different. Cars have a totally different distribution than the cars. So if we're just talking trucks, we sent half to the right and half to the left out of the site. Because we don't know.
Correct. We, we, we don't know, for example, if I'm a truck driver and I'm taking from this, I'm picking up some from this site going to the east, somewhere in Detroit or even south of the airport, it, it would take me more time and gas to go on 275. I, I am not incentivized, as it were, to take 275 because it would cost me time. Naturally, I would like to flow through Wayne Road and as fast as I can, you know, to jump on 94 and be on my way, which I believe, you know, was factored in for the increase from E-course to Wayne, that's 16%.
Yeah.
And I also feel that more traffic will come from 275, possibly to your site, but once things are done, it's going to flow on Wayne Road. And I think what you've presented to us also buttresses that point. We could call it trucks, uh, sorry, we could call it cars, but it may as well be trucks too.
We did assume some trucks on Wayne Road.
How many trucks did you assume?
We had four in the morning and seven in the afternoon.
So, so the four in the morning, seven in the afternoon, is that half, like 50% of what you expect to generate from the site?
Those are peak hours. So AM peak hour, one hour during the AM and one hour during the PM, not, not for the entire day. So the traffic study evaluates AM and PM peak hours of the adjacent street?
Okay, this, this is going to be my last observation. So if we look at number seven, which is that GM East Drive, and I'm going northeast, the number there is four and seven, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And then if I look at number eight, which is E-course going south to Wayne, the number there is four and seven?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm expecting everything that turns right from the side would turn south on Wayne?
Yes, that was our assumption. We have to make some assumptions when doing traffic studies. So our assumption was the majority of traffic would be headed to from the freeway. So we sent half of them to 275 and half to 94.
So what is, um, what would you put in place to, shall I say, encourage trucks to turn towards 275?
So I would ask, um, how can you answer the question about truck turning movements?
Yeah, and then my last question with that also is, you know, with the trains getting backed up from time to time, let's say half of your traffic is turning east, here comes a train, it's blocked the tracks, would the trucks just back up in the driveway and just sit and idle, and idle until the train moves? What?
So that's one of the nice things about having two points of access. So if the truck was trying to get out and the train was blocked, then they're just going to go out to the left to go out to 275.
So if something is happening on 275, if something is happening on 275 or on E-course and Cogswell, by default, everyone just turns right towards Wayne Road?
So, I'm sorry, I'm, I didn't hear the question.
So i, if, if the train tracks block the east?
Yep.
Everyone quote unquote would turn towards 275?
Yes.
Yeah, naturally.
In the event that the train tracks were blocked during that period and the truck was leaving, then yes, they would exit out to the left to go out to 275.
Okay. So same thing, in the same vein, if something happens by Cogswell and maybe there's an accident or whatever, that place is blocked, by default, all the trucks would turn to the right towards Wayne Road?
In the event that the road was blocked and vehicles could not make a left, then yes, they would have to turn right.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody? Anybody? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jerry.
A couple of questions in the chair. So I guess the first one's to the city. What year was the fire over there, Carol?
Yep, I'm writing your question down, Jerry.
Okay. What year was the fire over there?
What year was the what?
The fire.
Fire? Oh, I don't know.
Back in the, when the pallet place burned and they discovered the barrels and it was turned into a brown field?
There was two of them, I think one was 92. About 92-ish, maybe, maybe 89-ish.
Okay, okay, I remember that burn for like a week. All right. I just wanted to get that out there. I, that was memory because I went to junior high school there. Let's see here. So, uh, question, question for traffic. Is there currently a light at the General Motors intersection that would align with the site?
No.
There's not, there's there?
No, there is no existing traffic. It is, it, it operates on flash most of the time and then, um, when it turns on, when shift changed.
The planned traffic, gotcha.
Yes.
Okey dokey. And the distance between this light and that light is?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Half a mile.
But, um, both of the signals would be actuated and coordinated. This one we're proposing to run, uh, fully actuated. The other one just runs on flash and it operates twice a day.
Gotcha. Okay. That's it for the traffic questions. Question for the developer. So on your page LS11, your tree woodland preservation and tree removal plan, you show the cutaway in the woods for the water main that came off of Wick Road. But I noticed those trees aren't circled and red, so they're not included in your removal plan.
Sorry, could you say that again? You're, you're referencing the, the cutaway?
So if your water main heads north off of Wick?
Correct.
Along the school fence with a 35-foot easement? And you get up to where it dog legs off to the northeast toward your development, you're taking out a row of trees, correct?
Correct, and we have restoration obligations to it.
Right, but that's, that, trees are not included in your tree removal plan at all?
This is a, a permanent tree removal plan that wouldn't be factored into it. So this would be if we took anything out or impacted anything on that removal, we'd replace it one-to-one.
That's what I mean is, if you look at everything, you got circled and red, that's not, your, your easement from the, for the water main is not. That should be figured into your calculation.
We are crossing the wetland with our water main. But when we get on, sorry, Joe Webb, web engineering. Uh, so we're crossing the wetland with the water main and we're going onto the school property, pretty much a straight shot. No trees are being removed for the water main. That's running parallel to the east line of the school. No trees are being removed for the water main. That's running parallel to the east line of the school.
Joe, he's referring to the trees that are in the south.
He's talking about right here.
West corner of the property, of the applicant property.
Oh. I think we're crossing further here.
Okay, well, I, we can, yeah, we have to look at that again.
Well, I just want to point out that that was not included in the tree removal, the tree removal plan.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the next question on the water main is, why can't it come from E course?
Uh, we're trying to create a loop in the system. So right now, there's, you know, it's, it, that's a recommended design, so we have water from dual sources. So if we were to have an issue coming from one side, we loop it from the other side.
And also, there's much better water on Wick Road compared to E course.
Well, that's the new main.
Yep.
So question on that. To tie into that main, does that disturb that road?
No, it's going to be on the school property. The water main's on the north side.
So your connection would not be anything to do with the road?
Nothing to do with the road.
Okay, that's, I drove down here today, I was like, here goes the road. So, uh.
Yeah, we're just tapping the 12-inch on the north side.
Yes, guy, because it'd be with the fire hydrant, that's the 12-inch main, and that's on the residential, the house side of the ditch, correct?
We are planning on going down the school's property.
I know.
West side of the.
But when you grab your connection, how far is that off Wick Road?
I believe the water main's 30, 40 foot off the center line.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we weren't talking about cutting a chunk out of the road and having a bump for 100 years. Let's see here. Now, these geo piers, they're going to be rammed aggregate piers. Now, you described them as like aggregate balls getting shoved down on the ground?
It, it's limestone, so we're, we're using, oh, sorry, uh, we're, we're using, uh, they use a big cylinder and they drive it in the ground. And then they fill that cylinder with, um, with stone and they ram it down. It's basically a cheaper version of doing a precast concrete pier.
All right, so what would the operations be on that, like hours and?
We're talking about during construction?
Yeah.
Uh, typical construction hours and if we're near any, uh, that's a flexible thing that we can work around and make sure those are during the day.
Okay, so what time are we talking, like, like, uh, like five months, three months, three weeks?
My guess is about, it's about, uh, for a site this big, it's probably about a month.
About a month of that?
Correct.
All right, because I, I worked in Dearborn and I know they've been pounding piers there for the new Ford Product Development Center. And that was an interesting time for like four months.
So th- those are a little bit different than these. These are going about 20 feet deep and they're, um, they're, they're stone, right? And we're lifting the shaft as we go to help reinforce the sides. So we're going down 20 feet. These aren't, um, the, the peering systems that they would be using for multi-story buildings. This is, this is different. So we've done it, um, I guess on five different sites now. Um, and we can provide some information on this. They've done them all around Michigan, you know, right near residential. Um, so you're able to do it with minimal off-site vibrations or anything like that.
Okay, I just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, let's see, so it's the fire, the pipes, the traffic, general, just one. Uh, okay, so just, the, the school, I just went by there today, you get brand-new curbs and brand-new parking lot right through your easement. So how would you accommodate the school and what would be the timing of that during school hours or school operation now, like back in the fall?
Uh, we met out on site with some of the facility staff for the school. There's a slight area where there's a employee parking lot that just kind of, kind of juts out too close to the property line. So there may be an impact on that. That's mostly the old area. The, the big work that's done in the back, we shouldn't be impacting anything that is done. We're 100% obligated to repair. Um, and we're working with them on some other improvements for drainage along that eastern lot line too. So we're, we're trying to, we went out and asked, you know, how, how can we get this done? And it, it doesn't, it didn't seem to be a material impact. There's one light pole that will need to be worked around or possibly relocated. But it's not a ripping up, you know, a brand-new driveway that was just put in.
Okay, I just wondered about that because like you said, they're probably putting asphalt down tomorrow, aren't they?
Yeah, we walked the site out there a few weeks ago.
That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one last question. I, I think my second through the chair, I'm sorry. My second question was not addressed. What would you guys do to reduce traffic turning right so they don't fill up Wayne Road? Because one, once you make the turn to E course, it's going to fill up Wayne Road. I mean, right now, we are seeing a 16% increase in traffic. God forbid, the trains come and it backs up some more, we can get a flush of like 30, 40%. So what, what do you intend to do to reduce the traffic, especially trucks, from turning on E course and Wayne Road?
And, and that's something we've worked with tenants on in other, in other municipalities and other instances to make sure it's in the lease language. So we have enforceability with them. You know, there, there are certain Class A roads that they should be on and there's certain that they shouldn't. So we put provisions in the leases to make sure that they follow that.
So are you saying you're going to put that in the lease?
Correct, yeah. We can, we can put provisions in there to make sure they stay on the Class A roads.
You can or you will?
No, I will.
Okay.
We will. I, you know, I, one, one of the hardest things, right, we're, we're hearing complaints about stuff on Wick Road. We have an intersection that's closed, right? We've got a high, we've got a highway that's under construction.
It says for commercial vehicles. We've got.
Yeah.
Are we allowed to ask initial questions?
Yeah.
I'm just curious. I, I'm just asking, it's not, I'll back and.
I know, but I asked you in the beginning to please be.
I'm not the one that's asking anything.
Yeah, right.
Just asking if there's a, a formality asking if I can ask more questions.
We just don't allow people to talk back and forth.
Yeah, that's why I wasn't, uh, asking.
Thank you. Did you have something else to say or no? You done?
Okay.
I would just like, maybe I'll throw a can of worms out here. As far as the traffic goes, until you know who your tenants are, you don't even know what the traffic is going to be. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that is correct, and that's why it's based off an assumption like any of these other projects. Yeah, so, so similar to any of the other speculative projects that have been approved through Planning Commission, any of the buildings that don't have an identified tenant, they're based off.
Right.
Assumptions of that. So, and that is why there's a reoccupancy and the traffic study's redone. So the traffic study is based on the maximum utilization of the building.
Right.
So if we were to come forward and say, hey, we're going to add a ton of more car parking spots, we'd have to come back through Planning Commission.
Right, exactly.
For additional impacts.
Exactly.
That's the same thing with adding a railroad spur or access to Wick Road or rezoning. That's something that has to be made through a public hearing.
Right. I, I just wanted to point that out because we seem to be getting, kind of getting tied up on that area. And I, granted, we will probably have problems, but until we really know who's going to go into that building, you know, we might have somebody who only has 20 vehicles. I doubt it, but.
Yep, and, and that's why we push forward and, you know, we're paying for the widening in the traffic signal.
Right, right.
So we, uh, we're doing the best we can do on the frontage at the moment.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have a, a comment just for the residents. I understand you all's concerns for traffic and the impact on the environment and your land use over there in that area. But one thing I would like to say about the project itself, I think it would increase somewhat of the value of our roads with all the added additional traffic and everything else because that would give you more of an incentive for the county to act, to widen E course road and those roads that are affecting the traffic area. Because if you notice, um, from Van Buren Township to Taylor, that whole area is boulevarded. So with the impact of the increased traffic, and I mean, I understand your concerns, but me as a board member here, I'm about progress. I want to see a larger tax base. I want to see Romulus grow.
Right.
And the only way you're going to do that is to have industry pay for it through taxes. So the concerns that we have as far as impacting our lifestyles, I've been a Romulus resident a long time. I worked at General Motors right on E course road for a lot of years. So I don't think the impact that we are anticipating will be as, um, negative as we might anticipate. So that's my comment to the, uh, residents and your concerns. Yeah, to go to them.
Be nice, play nice.
What's that?
I said, play nice.
I've been respectful this entire time. I don't plan on being anything but that.
Can you, can, can you put your name and address back on the record for the recording?
Yeah, Jim Garrison on Oska Street. So I think part of the issue that we're having, particularly us that are on E course road, is that we already see the negative impact of the developments with our traffic and nothing's happened.
Right, yeah.
Um, the other side of that is the flooding is horrible. I mean, we have two houses on our street that in the spring, their garbage is at the corner of the road because the flooding is so bad because of the runoff and nothing's been done to address that. So when you talk about widening roads, that sounds fantastic, but it also eliminates drainage. So now you're adding more water and more issues to the houses that are adjacent to this development as well as the roads. So I think that's why, particularly for us, we just want to make sure this isn't something that Bill didn't figure it out later because we already have problems that are not being addressed. And, you know, with all due respect to the, the traffic, they don't live there. I do, right? My kids are there every day. I try to get my kids to school every day and you can't. You can't get out when GM, when GM's getting off of work and now this is going to be getting out of work at the same time and school's starting at the same time. I can't get my kids to school. So if you're going to widen the road, that's great, but then there's other problems that are associated with that widening. So I, I guess we just want to make sure that all those things are considered when, this is the neighborhoods that we live in and we, you know. And I, and I get you guys live around here too, but this is directly impacting my house on a daily basis. And nothing's been done to resolve the issues already. And so now we're being promised that adding cars, adding square footage, adding employees, adding trucks, and then we're going to be taken care of later and this isn't going to be a problem when we already have problems that aren't going to be, that haven't been addressed. And I've lived here for six or seven years now and it's been the same since day one. I mean, you live on E course, this entire house floods. The whole thing floods. It's unbelievable. My street in the winter, you can't even get up and down. My street doesn't get plowed, right? And I, I mean, I get that that's way off the tracks, but what I'm saying is to expect that we just say, oh, we trust it. We trust that these things are going to be addressed properly when, when they've already happened, you know, and using pre-COVID. It's fine, but there were so many more developments that have been added since COVID. So using pre-COVID traffic and pre-COVID all that and adding a percentage, that doesn't take into account for, and maybe I'm wrong. Obviously, this is what they do for a living. Um, and I'm in commercial contract, so I understand that there's always a science to it. But at some point, it's, it's got to be real. You got to show me, because that, there's a huge development that's been added since COVID. So your, the pre-COVID traffic has nothing to do with what the traffic is like right now. And a lot of these shifts are the same in all these buildings. And though, you guys drive those roads, you can't get up and down. And it's just, it's not, it makes it impossible to live there.
Yeah, I ask a question. To the petitioner, or could you come back up? Are you getting the flooding from the road back or from behind your house forward?
No, from the road back.
So the drainage in front of your home is?
Drainage all the way from the corner on E course, there's what, two, two of those houses, the only reason they were able to bind is because they flood so bad. And then closer to our house on Oska, there's two houses that are vacant, right? Because they flood so bad. Right, the city event center to the flight is awful. I mean, it's, you're talking 12, 14 inches of standing water. Was it you that put the cinder box in the back? Was that your house?
Yeah, right on.
Yeah. I mean, he's got, he built a retainer wall to try and prevent it and he's full of water. Now we're going to add more concrete and asphalt.
That's county? That would be county?
Yeah, that, that, a lot of that, you know, obviously on E course road, that's open ditch, that is county road right away. And county maintenance, then, um, further on back in that construction easement, there is county drain as well. So yeah, it happens to be a, a county jurisdiction.
So that's, one avenue to try is to least contact the county and let them know you're having that issue. They have a drain.
Everybody's been contacted.
Have you contacted?
It's an unfortunate reality. I see, there's, there's, one of our neighbors has to throw, he buys cheap couches because he throws them out every spring. Right? And he can't sell the house in the spring and he's tried because it floods so bad, people won't look at it. And now we're going to get to the point where it's going to be worse, right? So that's, it's, it's frustrating. And then we're talking about runoff and the potential contamination in our backyards on top of that. Because we already see how the water floods our yards from the sites over there being so high and the drainage being so poor. So now I'm going to have additional flooding while they're disturbing the ground that's all that they've, you know, obviously just stated that's contaminated. So it, it just brings up a lot of questions that I think we would like answered before we just, you know, lie down and say, okay, hey, build this in our backyard. Um, you know, I respect that potentially it's better for the, the site itself and better tax value. I'm not against those things being important, but who assures me that my kids aren't in the backyard walking around in contamination now, right? Because we're already getting flooded and now the flooding's worse. I mean, it's just, you know, we have to have, we have to carry flood insurance because of it. So all of these things are things that I would just, you know, where do we get those answers from? And there's no, there's no safe, sort of safety built in for us, so.
Thank you.
Can I give you a comment to that?
Yes.
Sir, there used to be a guy that sat on this commission named Melvin Zilka, and he worked for Wayne County. And he dug most of those drainage ditches way back and he used to constantly make the comment that they were 25 years out of their maintenance schedule. That's why you see the size of the trees that grow in them. It's strictly the county's not maintaining their drains correctly. And a lot of it heads to that E course drain which heads out to the Detroit River in the city of E course. That's the one that floods over Van Born and Taylor there.
Right, but you guys, you have rows that are bigger.
Well, their, their ponds are called detention ponds. They're not made to hold any water. They're not allowed to by the FAA.
Right.
So there's no waterfall.
I understand. Yeah, but we're going to make rows bigger to use the drainage. So I get it's a county issue, but I don't, I don't, what do we have to do?
Well, the pollution's there currently, correct?
Right, I understand.
Right, like I, that's why my first question I asked was, you know, what year was the fire? There was, it burned for a week. It was the news, it was column of black smoke and everyone went back there and they're like, what is all this back here? So that's got to get taken care of one way or the other. And there's, that's a reality too. What's that?
May I address counsel one more time? I worked with Wayne County on the ditch lines on E course road. I was conversating with Wayne County for the better part of a year. Wayne County did come out and they dredged the, um, it would be the south side of E course digits. The way that E course works is we have a drainage on the south side of the road. There's a city event center, they have a pump station. So the, the drain cannot go all the way down to the McCory drain, it has to go under E course road. That's where we run into the issue. So I have worked with Wayne County, I had that work done. What the gentleman was speaking of is we're also surrounded by city property currently, which is lowland land, that floods, it floods us out. That's all city. I worked with Romulus, it took me two years working with Romulus to get some of the flooding addressed. However, it was a Band-Aid. What they did was they came out, cut down some brush and things. They basically scratched the surface of the dirt and said, okay, that's a ditch, we're done, we're not doing anything else. There is no drainage off of what they did, it just holds water. So I, we have been down this road collectively, me and the neighbors, with Romulus and Wayne County to have the flooding issues addressed. Our efforts have not been enough. So with this proposal, this is a, this is a very large, very large area. And as the gentleman said, they're going to go down Wick Road off those storm drains, but they're going to utilize E course road as a backup. McCory drain already cannot keep up with the demand. So if they're going to use E course road as a backup drainage, it's not going to work. It already does not work. So I think that's what collectively we're trying to say is although Romulus or, uh, E course road belongs to the county, we're surrounded by city property and nothing's been done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I just have one comment to that. So the, um, we're aware, you know, I guess not on a personal level to. I guess not on a personal level to the degree of this, the McCory drain issues, but our property off Van Born Road, um, it floods a lot. Um, and we've petitioned the county twice to take care of this, uh, stretch of the McCory. It's to no avail. Um, we keep trying. We just spent a considerable amount of money redoing some of the detention ponds that we have over there, uh, to try to store more water on site, um, because we were actually having the drain overflow back onto our site and breach the, breach the walls of the, the drain. So, this project outlets to the post drain to the south. Um, we're, we don't have water directly going into the McCory, um, from this project. Um, as part of the process of working with the county, um, on the road widening, um, we'll make sure the concerns are heard on the, this is the first we've heard, uh, from the residential perspective that it's this bad. So, uh, the most we can do when getting the county out on site, we have, uh, some people coming tomorrow, um, and as well as our engineering submittals will bring up the concern as well.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, I just had one clarification on the traffic impact study. I wanted to make sure I looked back at the study itself. Um, and the background traffic does include all of the new, um, traffic from the Trade Center and from what was Royal Farms, now Sheets, and also what's on the north side of Smith Road. So, all of that was included as the background. Um, it was, as they were using the model, that was already determined to be, um, in use. And they were the traffic engineers that prepared, prepared those traffic impact studies. So, the, they were utilizing that information. So, I just wanted to clarify that we weren't looking at this in, um, vacuum.
All righty. Okay, back to the work at hand. And that is Ashley Capital. Any, no more questions or comments? Then, a motion is in order.
Do you want to work on a couple of the things ahead of time, the waivers that Jessica mentioned?
Oh, that's right.
Certainly.
But those are under, are those under the site plan or are they under the special land?
They would be under, um.
The site plan.
The site plan.
Okay. Do we do special land use first?
Do that first, sure.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. McAnally.
Make a motion to recommend a city council approval of special land use for SLU dash 2023 dash 004 Romulus Distribution Center for two warehouse distribution buildings, greater square footage than 80,000. Subject to the four items listed, I don't think we had anything added to that.
We had nothing added to those.
Okay.
Support.
Support, Mr. Long?
Yes.
Excuse me. I have a motion for Mr. McAnally, supported by Mr. Long. To recommend a city council approval of a special land use application for SLU 2023 004 Romulus Distribution Center for two warehouse distribution buildings, greater than 80,000 square feet, um, subject to the four items that are listed on page two of the planner's report dated June 14th, 2023. Discussion. Your call. Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Glaffeltie?
No.
Mr. Gobaidet?
No.
You said no? Okay. Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We got enough to pass. Correct, yeah. All righty, on to the. Site plan.
Now, no, I think you spoke of revising the light pole item. That was one of the issues.
That was a, a mistake in our letter. Um, that was just for clarification that the lighting is okay as proposed.
So, no variances?
A variance still is required. Um, it's a height variance and they will go to the BZA for that.
All right. So, then you've added, I know you added something about the curb height and you requested a, some photos to support the request.
Correct. So, I, I would offer that the planning commission grant the waiver, um, for the redu, reduced curb height in the trailer storage area, um, based on maintenance, um, evidence of maintenance on other sites.
Okay.
Okay, was there another one too?
Yeah, there were several.
Okay.
Landscaping, which was reduced at lead to, but they increased the evergreens.
Um, so, I would, I would recommend that the PC grant a waiver for a substitution for buffer type A along the south, east, and west to include the evergreen plantings, the double row of evergreen plantings.
Okay, I'm going to leave your wording as is for the record because I'm not going to repeat it. Okay, that's number seven. And number eight? I have landscaping in front of the building changing and then a rain garden computation.
So, I have two things in regards to the green belt. And one, I believe that the applicant should still, um, increase the landscaping to the 50% requirement per the zoning ordinance. Um, I guess the applicant can speak to whether or not that will be doable.
Through the chair, can you just confirm? I'm losing track of exactly because we've got about 30 different frontage conditions, so.
So, the green belt along E course, um, in order to not have the building materials listed in 1301, um, those requirements to have the exception taken, the, you have to have the 300 foot back, which you more than meet, but you also have to have a 50% increase in landscaping.
Are you referencing basically what we see here on E course?
On, on E course, yes.
Yes, that's acceptable.
You didn't do that?
We did include.
It's not, the landscape numbers on page one do not reflect a 50% increase.
So, we, yeah, I was about to say.
Okay.
We will comply with the 50% and we will double check the calculations.
Okay. So, that is not a waiver request. The, the second one in regards to the frontage was that the wetland footage, which, let me go back, was redu, uh, was reduced from the frontage calculation.
That's correct.
And per the ordinance, the frontage is the entire length. There's no reduction allowed for access easements, uh, buildings, um, wetlands. We do understand that the conservation easement doesn't allow them to plant there. Um, and it would be up to.
Through the chair, Jessica, I'm fine. I'm not asking for that waiver.
Okay, so that will be included back in as well?
Yeah.
So, that's not a waiver. And then the rain garden, they can treat that as calculations for detention as well.
Okay, what do we got? We got, do we have a number eight or do we not?
Nope. Well.
Yes, we do.
What is it?
The reoccupancy and basically the wording that you used, used in the past is once a tenant is known and prior to reoccupancy, anticipated truck and vehicle trips must be provided for review to verify if any associated improvements will be required.
Understand and agree. But that's, all the rest of that's handled, that you just mentioned.
Yep, everything else is.
All right.
So, that one's.
Okay.
Number eight.
So, this would be number eight.
Okay, so there's your number eight. Madam Chairman?
Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve site plan for, based on June 14th, 2023 MKSK reports and OHM reports, subject to the eight items as listed and as discussed into the record.
I support that motion.
Who's supporting it? Mr. Stone? Okay. All right, let's see if we can do this now.
Don't try to read it back.
I mean, I can try to read it back. Okay. Okay, so, uh, we are approving the site plan based on the June 14th, 2023 MKSK report, site plan, subject to the following eight items, or five items that were listed on page two of the planner's report dated June 14th, plus the additional three items that were added by the administration.
Correct.
Okay.
And that is for SPR 2023 dash 009.
That's what I was going to say.
Yes.
That's for SPR 2023 009. Any discussion? Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Glaffeltie?
No.
Mr. Gobaidet?
No.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. It is approved. Where'd they go? Oh, good luck. Now, you go before city council, you know.
And BZA.
Oh, and the BZA. Okay. Zipping right along. Zipping right along. Okay. Item two under public hearings is SP, SPR. SLU 2023 005 and SPR 2023 013 Sheets requesting special land use, site plan approval, uh, for, uh, drive-through fuel station, convenience store and restaurant at 333 80 Wick Road. And the petition was here. Did you bring breakfast? I'm sorry. Sorry to keep you here this long, but, and, okay, who is, uh, who's going to be the spokesperson?
Public hearing.
Yes, this is a public hearing, but we'll do this first. We'll let them talk.
Good evening, everybody, and happy Juneteenth. My name is Drew Miller. I'm with Skolken Gold Real Estate Development Company. Our address is 4270 Morse Road, Columbus, Ohio. Uh, so, my company, Skolken Gold, we are a preferred developer for Sheets. Sheets partnered with us about five years ago to, um, help them with their rollout for new stores in both central Ohio, Dayton, Ohio, and now southeast Michigan. So, I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself. Um, the site that, the project that you're going to hear tonight is the previous Royal Farms project. Uh, that is part of North Point's development. Uh, with me tonight is David Brockelmeier. He's with Sheets. And Becky Klein, she's with PEA Group, who is our civil engineer. So, I'm going to hand it over to Dave, David and, uh, hold on, we'll do Sheets.
Good evening. Again, as Drew said, my name is David Brockelmeier. I'm with Sheets. Uh, our address is 630 Morrison Road, Suite 150, Gehanna, Ohio. Well, uh, appreciate all of your time here tonight. We're very excited to present this project. And I know Sheets is new to this market, so I just wanted to take just a few brief moments and tell you about the Sheets brand. There it is. So, what is a Sheets? So, Sheets was founded in 1952 in central Pennsylvania in a small town, Altoona. Uh, it started as a convenience store with a deli. So, it was, uh, pretty true to what we are today. We still focus on, you know, made-to-order sandwiches, premium beverage offerings and as well as fuel, as you know. Um, but really, I just want to highlight the humble beginnings of our company. It is still a family-run, family-operated company with no franchisees. So, all of these stores are corporate. They will be corporate, direct hire employees. So, you don't have a situation where you have a franchisee coming to you that's not going to be standardized or, you know, not have the same kind of corporate structure that you're expecting. So, uh, I'll take you through just a couple of, a couple of slides to show you what our, our typical store looks like. These are open stores that are in the Columbus market. So, if you take a look, this is our very prototypical store design. Um, full-size brick. It's not the lick and stick. It's not the fake stuff. We have a beautiful articulated building. We have metal facials, um, a gray-looking lighting package. Um, so that just gives you an idea of what our sidewalk looks like, what our, our visual is for the building. And then this is our, our fuel car, pretty typical fuel canopy. Um, occasionally they vary a little bit, um, but this is what you're, what we're talking about tonight. So, that just gives you a good visual feel of who we are, what we do. And, and these are operators. You can see all the vehicles. These are operating sites. This is what they really look like. This is our convenience store and the restaurant. We have inside seating as well as outside seating. We do encourage people to come in, grab a bite to eat, although the food is served to go. You'll sit down, have a bite, and then head out. And then, of course, you can see our, our premium convenience offering. Anything you want, we've got it. So, that just gives you a good idea of what the inside of our building looks like. Uh, what makes us unique? Um, you know what? You can read the slide, but what I want to tell you makes us unique is our people. We hire the best employees. Um, the family that is Sheets is awesome. They're really personable people. They take care of their employees, 25,000 employees. Um, they get the same, the people that work at the store get the same benefits package that I would. So, it's really a huge benefit to our store employees and, and local communities. So, I would say that's what really sets Sheet apart, Sheets apart. Um, one other thing I want to highlight is we are committed to giving back to the community. At every store opening, we always donate to the Special Olympics and typically it's the local spec, Special Olympics. And then also, we try to find a local food bank to make a, a donation to. And that's not the last one. We, we continue to support communities, you know, as long as we're present in the market. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We have our engineering team and I can ans, answer any questions operationally or anything about Sheets as a culture or brand. I'd be happy to answer that now or I can answer them later.
Well, first of all, I'll hand it off. I was a little miffed when you had us off of I-75.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that little miscommunication on the, on the drawing.
I had to rub that nail a little bit. And your renderings were not that great.
Our, our renderings?
In the, you know, your picture, yeah, in the plan. It was hard to see exactly what the building was going to be.
Um, I'm not sure. I thought we turned in the full rendering. So, the architectural renderings that are in color, is that what you have?
No, no color.
No color.
No color?
No color, kind of, building kind of, yeah. Not really, anyhow.
I apologize for that. But, but what you saw on these slides?
Right.
I mean, this is, when you look at those renderings, that's what, what it really looks like. So, so apologize for a little miscommunication there.
So, I guess to cut to the chase, you know that we'd already approved Royal Farms.
Correct.
What is your facility, what is different in your plan than what's in Royal Farms?
So, there's, there's several things we'll talk about. As far as the sales go, Royal Farms is still a convenience offering. We do have a restaurant that is in-house from Sheets, so it's not some kind of Subway or somebody coming in from the franchise. Uh, we don't have a car wash. We're going to talk about the drive-through, which is, which is why we're here tonight. But really, that's, that's the big difference is, um, is, is we're a made-to-order food offering.
Okay.
If nothing else, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Becky. Okay?
Does anybody else have any questions? This, by the way, is a, is a public hearing too, so we have to open up to the public.
Yes, um, no, there will be no truck parking on site.
There will be no truck parking. They will be able to pull forward from the fuel, park briefly, walk in the store, use restroom, grab a sandwich, and get out. They will not be long-term, no overnight parking, nothing like that. Just, it's almost the exact same layout as Royal Farms had.
The only other question I had was something I saw on one of the drawings was the yard hydrant.
For the diesel lanes?
Yeah.
That is merely there for cleanup. So, we like to maintain everything we have and obviously, some of those diesel lanes get a lot of use at different times. So, spraying down things, cleaning, filling windshield washer buckets, things like that, um, that our employees need access to water for.
That ties into your waters.
It, it ties into the water system after the backflow preventer and the meter. So, it is metered. They're frost-free, so they, they don't freeze. Uh, so, it's going to be metered and connected to our, our water system.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, there you go. Yeah, with that, I'll turn it over to Becky with PEA.
Good evening. My name is Becky Klein with PEA Group. Uh, we have our home office in Auburn Hills. I'm from one of the satellite offices. Uh, my home is in Washington Township. So, just to click forward here a little bit, I will take you through the site. So, uh, our project is located at the northeast corner of Vining and Wick Road. Uh, it's an outlot for the North Point, the NPD Romulus development that's essentially developing everything in that rec, square rectangle that you see between Vining, Smith, Wickham and Wick. So, this is a aerial of. So this is a aerial of approximately what the site looks like today. They did some clearing, obviously. The dark outline is the property boundary of Unit 4, which is our parcel. This is the overall site plan for the NPD Romulus development. You can see where our site is in relation to that overall project. This is the previously approved Royal Farms, and this is the layout that was, was previously granted approval. So at the, at the north end of the site, you have the diesel canopy, and the trucks utilizing that would enter from that northern entrance on Vining Road, go through the canopy, and then head off through the northeast exit, and then circulate back around to get back to Vining Road. No truck traffic is allowed to head down to Wick Road. No truck traffic would, was permitted to go through the passenger vehicle area. In the center, they had the convenience store building. To the east of that convenience store building, you can see where they had the car wash. And there at the south was the regular passenger vehicle fuel, fueling canopy. So what we have today is actually very similar to this. This is the Sheets gas station aerial, and the differences are that there is a physical hard separation between the truck trap, truck, sorry, tractor-truck fueling station and the passenger vehicle area. There's, there's actually a hard curb separation there, so they cannot possibly get those trucks down around the passenger vehicle areas. Similarly, to the original layout, the Sheets gas station store is there in the middle. There is no car wash with this layout, as previously mentioned. Instead, that area is utilized as additional stacking for the drive-through at the restaurant, which is located on the north side of the building. And then finally, we have the passenger vehicle canopy at the south. So the landscape plan is going to match the previously approved plans. I know there were some discrepancies in what was submitted to the city, but we will restore the items and make sure that everything matches what was previously approved. A few things will have to be adjusted because, you know, we've made a few curb changes. But otherwise, we'll have the same numbers of plantings and the same species with the same calibers as what was approved for Royal Farms. So here's a slightly brighter layout. And just to summarize, the, the site is a regional commercial zoning, a regional center zoning, sorry. The building area there in the middle is 6,879 square feet. The building's gonna be about 21 feet tall. The fueling canopy is about the same height. The truck fueling canopy will be a little bit lower, and this site will propose 52 parking spaces, 12 spots for car fueling, and 10 spots for truck fueling. So we're, we're asking for some modifications and waivers for this project. Special land use is required for the six dispenser vehicle and five dispenser diesel fueling station, and to allow the drive-through for the restaurant. A special land use waiver is being requested so that we can have fueling operations for diesel trucks. There will, there will be a signage package that we'll submit separately that'll, that will address the variances on the signage. And then we are actually over the allowed ordinance level of parking for the site, so we're requesting five spaces above the maximum allowed number of spaces, which is 47. So landscape plan for the site is very similar to what we had for Royal Farms. Again, the differences are in that we have adjusted some of the curb lines, and we now have some additional landscaping in the island that separates the diesel truck fueling area from the passenger area. So in terms of circulation, this layout shows the access for the Romulus fire truck, so they aren't going to have any issues circulating around the gas station and exiting the site. Similarly, they aren't going to have any issues getting into the diesel area and then again, leaving the site. Deliveries for the convenience store, a lot of them will come in on full-size tractor-trailers, so in this case, we will have a vehicle circulating around the, the center of the site. And then again, it'll exit out the east, head north, and pass through the North Point Development Industrial subdivision to get back out to Vining Road. Trash vehicles will enter in through the truck entrance in the diesel fueling area, access the trash enclosure, and then exit the site again through the northeast. And then this last slide shows the access routes for fueling operations on the site. There are striped areas next to each of the tank pads, so tanker trucks will be able to come in, stop there, and perform fueling operations without hindering traffic circulation or fueling under any of the canopies. So color elevation for the Sheet store, this is the front of the main building. That's a left-side elevation, right-side elevation, and then the rear. So this would be the side, the north side of the building, and, and you can see the two drive-through windows there. Passenger canopy elevation is, it's gonna be consistent with the building, brick columns on the uprights. Color palette is, it ties right in with the building. Sorry, that was an extra slide. The dumpster enclosure is also gonna be masonry, and the brick will match what's on the building. We have a small utility shed shown on the site plan that's for storing maintenance equipment for the site.
Could you go back to the pups?
Please, yeah. The dispensers?
I thought it was six pup sets. This looks like?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, this is not the, uh, this is a prototypical elevation. I did not have a site-specific one to include in the slide set.
That's confusing, okay.
Yeah, so when we make the resubmital and address, the items in the letter will include the correct elevation drawings that are site-specific. So we were talking about the trash enclosure, and then there's a small storage building. But again, rather than putting up a, you know, prefab or a little metal shed to hold their equipment, they're investing in an ice brick building that's gonna match the main store. So talking about the outdoor amenities for the site, I have those highlighted in blue. They have an outdoor dining area along the front of the building, which would be the south side. They'd like to put a couple of ice chests. You see those in the lower right? They have a small merchandiser that's mostly used to sell windshield solvent and automotive items that's there on the southwest. And then on the east side is where they have the propane cages. This is a zoom-in of the outdoor dining area. All the furniture is permanently bolted to the pavement. It cannot be moved, so it will be installed in such a way that it provides plenty of clearance so that the ADA pathway always stays completely available and unobstructed. And, you know, it, it makes cleanup a lot easier as well. This is the, a blow-up of the front of the building, and the client understands that Romulus wants to see some screening around the outdoor merchandisers, so they're actually proposing to put two masonry wing, wing walls on either side of the ice chests and a, the section of fence in front of it to screen the, the front view. Here's a photo of a site in Columbus where they've already installed screening of this type. You can see the two wing walls on either side of the ice chest enclosure, and then the screen fence panel out in front. This is what their automotive merchandiser looks like. It's really just a, a small set of plastic racking that they'll put washer fluid and incidentals on right next to the front door. Finally, I've got the propane cage here. Again, there would be two masonry wing walls on either side and a screen fence panel in front. So that's the, the end of the slideshow I have for you. We have reviewed the various comments provided to us in, in the letter package that we received, and we are going to resubmit. We agree with the, the comments contained herein. We'll address these items and resubmit drawings that meet the City of Romulus requirements.
Okay. Let me, uh, this is a public hearing, so let me get that portion out of the way, and then we'll go back to talking to, to you. This is a public hearing. Let the records show, we have on file an affidavit of first-class mail. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter, please raise your hand. When you're, now it's pro, podium and give us your name, address, and your comments. Does anybody wish to speak? Should've kept some around from the last one. No. I take it this is all Sheets? Okay. Well, since, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay, open it back up to the council, to the, whatever we are.
Chairman.
Yes.
Through Chair to Petitioners, explain the, I guess, the ice chest and the propane stuff. Is that gonna be in the front of the building, side of the building? I know it's screened, but I don't know, 'cause I have a couple of notes on it in my pack.
Absolutely. So the ice will face Wick Road. The other propane will be on the side of the building facing east.
And it will be screened, both will?
Both will be screened, yep, for, for the requirements. And the automotive, you saw that. That was in a little bit of a non-typical location because of some other things at that site, but that would be on the front of the building as well, facing south. And we don't sell, what, what you've seen here is all we sell outside. We do not sell mulch, salt.
Firewood.
No firewood. If we have firewood, it's in the atrium, in the, in the vestibule. So we do have some other incidentals like that in the vestibule.
We have a comment from the building department. I don't know if that's been dealt with, where it says, "With the propane tank enclosure, ice enclosure located on the sidewalk, it appears that minimum required width may be encroached up." Clarification required.
We just wanted, we just wanted some verification on what that width of sidewalk would be after that enclosure and ice chest was in.
And we did submit a new sidewalk plan that was prepared by our architecture team, and it does show those clearances. I forget what those clearances are exactly. We could probably flip through and find that. Next slide.
No.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments, anyone? Mr. Long, then you.
Okay.
Mr. Long?
Yes. In our previous agreement with Royal Farms, we had discussed having a, by that being in proximity to the highway, some type of pet walking area. Is that possible with your rendering or with your plans?
So yes, the original layout for Royal Farms included pedestrian walking areas with a couple of seating areas with pet sanitation stations. Those same amenities are in this plan, same locations, same dimensions. They have not changed.
Thank you. And how many employees will you have there at that site?
So our typical store employees, between 30 and 40. That captures 90 or 95% of our location, so somewhere between 30 and 40, depending on volume and how many people we can hire.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I have a question about the drive-through. Based on your experience from other stores, and I mean, different drive, drive-throughs are relatively similar, some more than the others, what would you say is the average time that you're targeting for a car to circle through the building?
Sure. So, so a couple of things. We do have a mobile app that helps with our, our lead times on deliveries, so you can mobile order ahead, have it paid for, and all you have to do is pull up to the drive-through window, tell them your order number, scan your, scan your order, grab your bag, and you drive off. It's awesome. Also, our order points, we don't have an actual talking squawk box, as you might say. It's touchscreen. So as soon as they pull up, they start ordering, and it's a very fast process. It's probably several, if they order at the touch point, it's probably several minutes, probably three to four minutes. If they order on the mobile app, it's as, almost as soon as they get there. And if you, if you wanna know just a rough, you know, peak hour of how many people visit this drive-through, we've looked at our data across the entire platform, which is almost 700 locations, and it's roughly 11 cars at the peak hour at noon. It's not very busy. We have some stores that are a little higher, we have some stores that are a little lower, but middle of the road is 11 cars an hour at peak hour, which is roughly noon.
Yeah. Now, we, we know with every operation, things do happen where, you know, you're not able to make the sandwich fast enough, or, you know, would you have, like, designated areas where, you know, like, parking 1, 2, 3, where you could just, you know, to keep the traffic flowing, you, you could just have them move over to the side a little bit?
So we have a couple of things. There is one space that they can pull forward from the drive-through window, where they could move up, so we could get one car there. And if it gets really backed up, they could pull up into the spaces next to the building, and our employees would come out of the door. We actually have a man door right next to the drive-through window, and they can walk right out, right out that door, right out to the customer with their bag of food.
Okay. Still on the drive-through and the, the circulation, so let's assume 11 cars, let's assume, you know, we want great business, business is coming, and this is rush hour, and traffic begins to back up to Vining. Since that's going to be a very busy thoroughfare, what, what would be your mitigation effort to make sure that, you know, the cars don't back up to Vining? Any thoughts on that?
Becky could speak to this, but I, I think the biggest thing we've provided is a lot of stacking. I think when you look, it's that northwest corner is the drive-through window, and when you count back, I can't remember exactly how many cars we can stack, but it's probably like, what, 15? By the time we got to the back end of our canoe, down on that southeast corner of the building. But it's, we have probably easily 15 stacking spaces from the, the corner of the building of the drive-through window is down to where they queue in line, and then it would add all the way back out to Wick Road. I have never seen one of our stores have that many cars in the drive-through. I just have not. So it, it's roughly 10% of our restaurant business as a whole, of the made-to-order, you know, made food in our stores, 10% of it goes to the drive-through. So it's not like Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, Culver's, anything, or McDonald's. It's not the 90%, where 90% of it goes out the window. Does that provide you enough information to give you a good?
Yes, yes. And, and I must really commend your rendering. If, if the store is gonna look like that, then it, it looks beautiful from the outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one other question through the chair. One other question through the chair, if I may. How many of your stores are near highways like this one will be? Or percentage-wise, I mean, is, are most of them community-based?
I think Scott has a little bit to say about this. We do have a lot of stores that are community-based. Scott might have a little bit.
So Scott Armstrong with Sheets. I'm actually located in Michigan now. To answer your question, we have kind of a mix. Our, what we call our phase ones are off the highway, but we do have some more neighborhood in our more legacy markets like Pennsylvania. So eventually, we will have those type of sites here. I would say majority of them are probably 60-40 highway, 60 highway, 40 neighborhood, if I were just.
So you're experienced with the highway?
What's that?
You, you were experienced with the highway areas?
Yeah, that, that's our first target until we build density and brand recognition, and then we'll kind of go into more neighborhood markets.
Is this your first venture here in Michigan, or?
This will be our first store here in Michigan.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. One, for that touch point? Is there a canopy over there so where the people are not getting wet or snowed on? Because, you know, Michigan has interesting weather.
So, yes, there is a small canopy that covers that area. That would get approved with our sign package. I don't remember the dimensions of it exactly, but I would guess that the canopy is probably approximately four foot by four foot, something like that.
And other question, had you considered electronic charging stations?
We consider electronic charging stations at a lot of locations. One of the issues with electronic charging stations is we don't own the technology. So we can't, I can't in good faith talk to you here and say, "I'll guarantee you a Tesla charging station." a Tesla charging station," because Tesla has to approach us, and they essentially operate their businesses totally separately, but since we don't own the technology, we literally can't, we can't guarantee it yet. The technology's going to come out at some point, but at the present moment, that's something that we're not able to guarantee.
Comment on that, David? We're actually the number-one third-party vendor for Tesla, but we offer it to Tesla and EV Go. But again, what David mentioned is, we offer it to them, but they ultimately decide what location they want to pick based on demand, but we're working on our proprietary charging stations to install at location. I don't know the timing of that, though.
Okay, thanks.
I can add one more little bit of information. If you look at the parking spaces next to the passenger vehicle, right there at the corner of Wick and Vining, those spaces are tentatively slotted to be future EV charging stations, so that they'll be striped and graded appropriately if, if and when it makes sense to install them here. They'll be ready to go in those spaces.
Thank you, that was actually my hope, that at least it was some forward thinking on that. Appreciate it.
Just a question through the chair, to the city. So, so the post, so losing Royal Farms and going with Sheets, what does that do to the timing of Phase One, Two, Three of the whole project?
You pulled your old stuff out. Good job, Jerry. They actually had the condition re-zoning agreement amended. City Council did that, David won't know, was it last month, two months ago?
About a month ago.
Yep, so to adjust for these dates. So, it's all been taken care of, but they are under, it's why, you know, you're seeing a plan that still needs to be cleaned up a little bit. You know, we only did one review on it, but that's where, we're on a real tight time, of course, because of that.
Right.
I was just wondering about that, how that affected things. All right, thank you.
Yep, just extended, so.
When do you plan to open?
I believe the date that we've agreed to is September first of next year. It's somewhere in that range. We do have an aggressive timeline, but I can guarantee you, if there's a team that can do it, it's ours. Our construction team is in-house, and they are, yes, twenty twenty-four, September twenty twenty-four is our date.
Any other questions, just found us? From anyone? Do you have something?
I do, if I may, if everyone else is done. In regards to some of our items, and I do appreciate Becky saying that they'll be addressed, there were some that were maybe a little bit larger and had a little bit more discussion. Appreciate the anticipated trips, that will just need to be updated in the trip generation study and the analysis done between the two. The yard hydrant was discussed, and that will have to be metered and backflowed. The underground detention, I do see, at least on these site diagrams, that it's been shifted over, it appears. What's the clearance now between the detention and the fuel?
Yeah, after we got those comments back, we took a hard look at that and talked to Sheets Engineering to see what we could do in terms of relocating those tanks. So, we have been able to shift them over eighteen feet, so there's approximately twenty feet between the edge of the detention system and the nearest tank end at this point.
Okay. And have you started a conversation with Wayne County on amending the permit, or?
We have not yet. That will be one of the very next steps that we do.
Perfect.
If I might mention one thing really quickly about our construction process. Our construction team drives sheet pile, excavates the hole, and then fills it back in and pulls the sheet pile. So, we don't disturb that native soil or that soil barrier as much as benching it back. So, we do have a nice separation, other than our stone base, so we don't have pea gravel or something like that crossing in between our UST field and that detention system.
Okay.
Just a little bit of clarification on the construction aspect.
Sure, and we just noted that it needed to be re-looked at, it couldn't be constructed under the old permit, the detention base, because of the change in the layout, and we will not be the final say on that, that's Wayne County. But appreciate the info, and as much information you can give them, the better. The fire truck we talked about, how about the loading space closer to the building? Where is it intended for delivery trucks to the building to park?
Do you want to talk about that?
So, yeah, in our revised drawings, I'll make this clear, but essentially, they bring in most of their stuff right through the front door because that's the closest proximity to everything, so they'll actually bring one of the trucks down parallel to the first spot there in the passenger canopy. They do this stuff, you know, off peak hours. This would be kind of a middle-of-the-night type of thing when there's not a lot of traffic, and then they can wheel stuff right off the back of the truck in the front doors. Other vehicles will circulate around the building and stop on the east side, and there's a side entrance there, and a lot of the smaller vendors, beer, wine, and that type of thing will come in through those doors. Again, they, they train their drivers to, because they're open twenty-four-seven, they train their drivers not to block anybody in, and they'll wait patiently to get people out of the way before they stop their vehicle for their loading and unloading.
Okay, and that'll be depicted on the next go-around?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I need to be excused. Good night.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Is there any issue do you feel like you will have with decreasing the illumination and the lighting so that we remain underneath the tent panels?
I think we've already prepared a rough photometric plan on this one, didn't we? And I think we've gotten that handled, or we're going to meet code.
Okay, what was submitted didn't meet code, it was over, so as long as you are still working and revising that.
We'll work with staff, make sure we revise that.
I did go back and look at the Royal Farms canopy photometric, and they did allow us to go over the standard under the canopies directly.
Under the canopy, it's okay, per the newest amendment, and I thought I had it marked up, but there were some areas that are within the parking lot that were.
In the parking field, those things will be fixed.
Okay. That was it for the major items that I had remaining.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Just have one question in regards to your power supply backup for your sites. Do you, any of your sites have that, like, when we lost electrical power, all the stations, you couldn't get fuel because they didn't have any power and all that? Do any of your sites have that?
So, we don't have backup generators, but I believe our electrical system is already pre-plumbed to have, to receive a large generator plug-in.
Okay.
So, if power's to be out for some crazy amount of time, we could get a portable generator and hook it up. So, we do have that capability, yep.
Thank you.
Just a comment. I don't know if you have many stores near airports, major airports?
We have several, actually, yes.
Okay, it's just if you were to go to, there's a competitor down by the airport, they have a real struggle with the limousine services tying up all their parking spaces for long periods of time.
Well, I think it helps that we've provided a good amount, a healthy amount of parking on the site. We have a lot of experience with sites like this, and I think fifty-two is a number we're very comfortable with. Hey, if we get a fleet of limousines that pull on site, we do have a pretty, pretty good amount of real estate here to park them, but, yeah, I don't, I don't know if we're prepared to have a fleet of limousines pull on. But what we'll do, we have to do, manage them.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? If not, our motion is in order.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. McInally.
Make a motion to approve special land use, SLU twenty twenty-three zero zero five Sheets.
Recommended to the City Council, sorry, not approval.
Thank you.
Recommend to Council approval for special land use Sheets. For the proposed vehicle and diesel fueling stations and drive-through restaurant uses at three 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 eight zero Wick Road, subject to the four items listed.
Support.
Support? I have a motion, Mr. McInally, supported by Mr. Bovade, excuse me, to recommend the City Council approval of special land use application for SLU two oh two three oh oh five Sheets for the proposed vehicle and diesel fueling stations and drive-through restaurant uses at three 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 eight oh Wick Road, subject to the four items listed on the planner's report, page two, dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? Mr. McInally?
Yes.
Mr. Bovade?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Jamison?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Chair Boches will recommend that to City Council. On to the next one.
Madam Chairman, make a motion to approve site plan for SPR twenty twenty-three zero one three Sheets, subject to the four items listed.
There were no add-ons to that one?
Not that I'm aware of.
Say it again?
No.
Support.
Who supports that? I have a motion, Mr. McInally, supported by Mr. Bovade, to... Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I was reading this. Approval of the site plan based for SPR two oh two three oh one three Sheets, subject to the four conditions listed on page two of the planner's report, dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Mr. McInally?
Yes.
Mr. Bovade?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Jamison?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Chair Boches, it is approved. Good luck. All the rest of the people got to sit there all night, how are they related? Would they at least like to introduce themselves? None of you are the chef? Thank you very much. We look forward, you're being, welcome to Romulus. Okay. Well, that was quick. Moving right along. We have old business, do we have any old business?
No old business.
No old business. Do we have any new business?
No new business.
No new business. Item nine is election of officers.
We starting with the chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to elect a chairman, cheerlady, Friday, you guys are cheerlady.
Support.
Was there support?
Support, again.
Oh, I knew you were.
Support, at the time.
All righty, so you're, I do accept, I do accept the offer. I guess I have to roll call, huh? Mr. Crowe?
Well, do we vote next month, or, that was just the only, only, uh?
We're going to do each individual office at this point.
Okay.
We could do a group if you want to make multiple nominations, it's all okay.
Okay, oh, yes.
Okay, keep going.
Individual, okay. Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Bovade?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. McInally?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Jamison?
Yes.
Chair Boches, I'm the chair.
Madam Chair, discussion? Is it possible to make a motion, we leave offices as currently are and go that route?
I'm sorry?
Leave all the offices currently as they are?
You could.
Oh, yes, you could.
We have done that in the past.
We've had done it in the past.
I'd like to make that motion, if that's possible.
Just leave them the way they are?
Absolutely.
Second?
Maybe you want to say that, though, just for the recording secretary, so who they are.
Oh.
I think that's the secretary's job to read those off, isn't it?
There you go. That would be for Mr. McInally for vice chair.
Vice chair.
Mr. Bovade for secretary. We have no treasurer?
No.
So moved?
So moved?
Support.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, now, just remember, inaugural ball is at a later date. Last, PC cases involving advice or input from the planning commission.
Well, we have no specific cases. We were going to talk to you guys a little bit tonight, just about some procedures and protocol, and just the way you're getting your packets, timing out packets and all that, but we're going to not do that because it's very late, but the one thing that, that we're going to ask again is if there's any problem with you guys looking at emails around the meeting dates. We had some stuff that we needed to communicate with you guys, and if email, maybe each of you individually could just tell us if, you know, you don't use email, just, just to let us know, and what is the best way to communicate you, communicate with you. We think it's easy, we just blast out a quick email, hey, da-da-da, here's this, here's this, and, you know, we don't hear back, and so it then means phone calls. And Kayla, Kayla makes them, and I make them, so.
If you have most of our cell phone numbers, blast us a text saying, "Look at your email."
That's, that's, it is good to know who texts, who uses the cell, who uses, that's what we're trying to get, and.
So, that way we know to go into our email and look at something.
Yeah, good, okay.
I'm working during the day.
Right, that's where we don't want to bother during the day, right.
My emails will all pop up.
So, you, I did text, I said, "Call me when you can," so, yeah, that's how we handle that. So, does everybody text, or do we have everybody's cell number, number one?
Right.
Okay, so I'll use cells, and you all text.
That'd be the quickest way.
We're going to, we're going to switch to that. Oh, problem solved.
You're still going to email the pack, the documents.
Exactly, oh, you're going to get my packets, you're going to get the bigger information, but it's to, it's to let you know that there's an email there for you.
Perfect.
Perfect, if you all use text.
Carol, I can say that texting the day of, I mean, emailing the day of, probably not going to work.
Well, it's one of the things that, that in this whole scheme of things, presentations tonight didn't come till after Kayla was gone, a couple of you that I walked in with, it's rundown, we're still here, it's, it's what we're dealing with on, on that side of things. Late semittals, just, just what we're dealing with, and we're trying, you know, very hard, and we will be working on it, you know, to get things, but sometimes it happens. Sometimes stuff, all those, when he kept referring to pictures and the view sheds, and it, no, it came after four o'clock today, some of it, so.
Yeah, I think in the past, we had this discussion, and we talked about making sure the petitioners knew that they had a deadline to get it to us, and if they didn't, they may have to wait till next month.
Well, then, then that would be, be your, in your motion, if that's what you wanted, wanted to do, absolutely, we'd support you all the way, if that's, but it is, it is getting out, it's getting taken advantage of, getting added in a little bit.
Yeah, I think also, it would be good to know if a petitioner is submitting late, you know, I mean, and we could just also address it because we, we can't just continue this way.
The traffic study was, you guys not getting that was our fault. That was, it got missed, you know, as, as it was being put together, and we were scrambling so bad because stuff was late, and we really were trying, we knew we had people going up north, and we were trying very hard to get it out. We shoot for Monday, we shoot for a week ahead of these meetings, every single month, and, you know, when we don't have stuff to put in packets.
What is a good timeframe for you guys, when you like to have your packet to give you the time to review all the information?
A week before?
One week? Okay.
At the minimum?
If I get my Wednesday early, I'm fine.
I'd say Tuesday or Wednesday.
But, of course, we'd love to have Tuesday.
I know, okay.
Yeah, Wednesday.
We will work very hard at getting that done.
This was kind of a disaster to try to get through.
This was, this was, and there were, there were several factors, several. This was, this was, and there were, there were several factors, several, several.
Oh, yeah.
That's why it was, you know, talk to you guys individually, and both, both projects were bigger projects, things that, that involved not just the planning commission, but city council involved with North Point and the conditional zoning agreement and timing factors we needed to get Sheets through with the Ashed Capital Project, you know, that had already some approvals done. They were under, they're under tight timeframes, and when we scheduled public hearings, you know, Sheets, it wasn't Sheets, it was actually their engineers, promised us that those plans would be in. We scheduled a public hearing, we hadn't even seen a site plan.
I felt sorry for them, sitting there.
It was, they didn't know, it was, you know, it was the engineer that made, you know, they made the promises on behalf of their engineer, and then their engineer couldn't turn it, so.
Does anybody else have reports on interest, that's the question? Mrs. Roscoe?
You know what, I only have one thing tonight. My phone doesn't go dead here, so I can read it to you. And, because I think it's the most important thing, unfortunately, it's about the railroads. It's got the dates. Oska, Romaine, and Hanon road crossings, as of June 20th through 22nd, they're going to finish up what they started in April. It says that railroad will be replacing railroad ties, railings, paving, et cetera, that they previously started in April. Tuesday, June 20th, they're going to be working, working on Shook, Oska, and Hanon. And then on Wednesday, June 21st, they'll be working on the one at Romaine. So just watch for that. The crossings are anticipated to reopen on Friday, June 23rd. So that will be all next week, taking into consideration that you're going to have some of those railroad crossings are going to be closed.
We can't find a road to go through.
I, I get it, but anyways, as far as that goes, that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Under Communications. Do you know when they're going to start here on River Drive?
July 5th.
Because they, they came and put the blue flags in our yard.
Okay, yeah, they probably came out of state for the detour signage. So that project was supposed to start before Memorial Day, but then the contractor had a little bit of scheduling problems, and it got delayed, and then they came back, and
Because they put them halfway in front of our, halfway our front yard? And my husband said, are they widening the road?
The road has been a little, just like in the same way, just newer.
That's going from where to where?
Basically, like 1,800 feet north of Eureka. Okay, so where the transition between the concrete and the asphalt pavement start, that's where they're starting. So it's, it's an asphalt resurfacing project. It'll start right at that transition and go all the way to Pennsylvania.
Gotcha. A quick question on here on River Drive also. When are they going to cut across the road and the bike trail and put their culverts in?
You know, they wanted to start that, Dan is excavating, that has the 1975 project, wanted to start that really quick, but what they found out is that there's an energy gas line under the road that's right in the way of their culvert. So they're in the midst, consumers is planning for the relocation of it to facilitate the install of their culvert. So last I heard, and I haven't been in touch with them for the last week, was that sometime in September, they'd be tooled up, given, you know, enough time for consumers to move their utility and get it out of the way for them to open up it and up their culvert.
So that's going to be a lot worse overall than it was supposed to be. Good Lord. They got an idea how long that's going to take?
That shouldn't be too long, that, that will be probably like a two-week process.
Two weeks?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And we have our project planning department development status report. Anybody have any questions, anything on here?
There's a possibility of three projects on here that you may see next month. Project, Project Wayne, this is if they submit on time. We gave them a deadline, and.
Project which one?
If they're not in by next Monday, they're not going on.
Oh, Project Wayne.
Project Wayne, Romulus Self-Storage, and one called Ali Collision. So. We will, we will see.
Madam Chair, I do have a question for Carol. I say I do have a question for Carol.
Oh, go ahead.
Carol, next year, will we be pushing this date to a meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday, like we have in the past with other holidays?
Well, I, that came up, that came up actually a couple of weeks ago, and my understanding is, is that that needs to be negotiated by, through the Teamsters contract. Roberto, you might know a little bit more. Have you heard anything about Teamsters requesting that this be a holiday?
Well, okay, so there's, there's not a whole lot of information regarding the Teamster contract, but the decent fire were, I guess they call it awarded, a holiday for Juneteenth, and I would suspect that it would follow with the rest of the unions during that time of negotiations, and potentially even, you know, the administration as well, so you have to be seen.
Thank you, Roberto. We're so glad you made a guest appearance tonight. Welcome, welcome, and come back anytime.
Usually he sits there and doesn't say anything. We have all kinds of questions.
I know, I'm waiting for more questions from Jerry.
Now we'll have to.
Actually, you have one.
Go for it.
Real quick, Cadillac asphalt off of Hare River Drive, like cross street with my subdivision, did they change their yard or something? Because there's dust comes out of there like I've never seen before.
Interesting.
Did they add new piles, take down trees? They did something different over there.
We can check it out.
Yeah.
And who's got the street sweeper that keeps going down here on River Drive? Is that the city, or them? That's us? I've seen it twice, I'm like, never seen that before.
We don't, we own a street sweeper, but we also lease one for a month. And when we have it, we sweep the whole city as many times as we can with that sweeper. We double back sometimes, three times, sometimes twice, go for a plan, go into all the subs a second time.
Because the Cadillac asphalt, when I used to pull out of the subdivision in the morning, I'd look over there, you didn't see much. Now I look over there, I see lights I've never seen before. So I know something's different. Just something to look at.
Check it out.
Go check it out now.
Looks like the piles are like, I don't know, something's different.
Okay.
Her volume is going up.
Roberto, Roberto, a question. When you guys decide to go through the subs, is there any way to get a heads up, so we can let people know not to park on the street? Because it looks kind of wonky when it's like this, because we only have parking on one side in our neighborhood, so everybody's parked on there, so one side really doesn't get swept. Oh, no, that doesn't work. If you reach out, because I know the city has collected the HOAs, just let the HOAs know, and let us blast it out to the residents.
Yeah, Kathy was working with wanting to be there, our street sweep schedule, so I, I personally put them on, it would have been a good life, but.
Okay, item eleven, adjournment.
So who?
Support.
I have a motion from Mr. McInally, supported by Ms. Jamison, to adjourn Mr. McInally.
Yes.
Ms. Jamison?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Mr. Boboade?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair Boches, he stands adjourned.